Hello.
Hi. Good afternoon. Today for the workshop agenda, we have Melissa G. Venelli on the phone.
Yes, hello.
Hi, I'm Melissa. So we're going. We'll begin by reviewing the agenda for December tenth, the regular agenda. And at this time, we will turn it over to Dr. Atkins.
Okay. The first item that there was a question on was item D one, approval to official minutes of the school board. I believe that there was a correction that was sent in. So at that point, in terms of the dissenting vote and all that, that has since been, that's a correction that Ms. Johnson will make in the minutes.
Yes, I was going by seats and not by people and wasn't thinking in the right seats. So that's my mistake, I'll make the correction.
There it is.
Can I make a statement on that? Also, the other thing that I'd asked about it was to make sure that the verbiage was in there as to why it was a poll.
We had gotten away from putting all that verbiage in there to streamline the minutes. So I have not been putting the reason for polls, if that's something the board wants to do, again, just let me know.
Well, I think it's important, I mean, not a whole dissertation, just a line or something that states why it was pulled.
I think, again, I think we need to discuss that as a board, if we're going to change what we're doing with respect to polls. If we change it for this poll, that means every poll will have to have a reason for the poll, correct?
Right, and I think that the reason for the poll is verbalized by the person making the poll, so it would be in the minutes anyway.
Right. No, but that's, well, my point was that it's not in the minutes. It's in the video, but it's not in the written minutes anywhere as to why the poll, it just says there was discussion.
Right, okay, well, then, shall we take a minute to poll the board, Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, no, I'm happy with the way the minutes are currently prepared and presented.
And Mrs. Jordan?
Yeah, I'm good with it as well.
Okay, and I am too, so, okay, we'll keep it the way it is for now, thank you.
And then as to the one about item N three, that really should not have been pulled. It was under public hearing, that was an error that it was pulled, so it was discussed. Actually, you people voted on it twice, in error.
Right.
So I took, according to our legal counsel, I took the vote from when we actually got to the item under public hearing.
Do you have any further comment on that, Dr. Atkins? No, okay. Okay, I want to continue.
And then, I know the last one regarding the minutes, there was a question about the approval to adopt job descriptions as a part of operations. And I guess that was the same similar comment, Ms. Johnson, right?
I think, Ms. Gittens, you were wanting me to put the reason for the poll, is that what you were getting to?
Well, it's a moot point now, everyone has decided not to do it, so just disregard what D one on the paper.
So next item is under consent, academic services. The first approval, the memorandum of understanding with Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the Sun Coast, Inc. Chuck Bradley will provide us the response to the question. There were a couple of questions, as you can see there. First one, regarding mentors, referrals, criteria, when during school hours or after, where, on campus or off, who, elementary, middle, high? And then, second question, please explain how we'll move forward regarding pre and after school program priorities. Examples would be Nations, YMCA, Boys and Girls, and how will we allocate and decide who gets what? And then update on the Twenty First Century Grant.
Welcome.
Thank you. Would you like the answers to those questions? At least one of them. I'll be happy to answer the first question there. At the scope of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters grant, this is a continuing grant that allows the Big Brothers, and this in particular is an MOU, that allows the Big Brothers, Big Sisters organization to provide mentoring programs in our schools. It does happen during the school day. It focuses primarily at the secondary level, although the agreement is K-12. And the organization screens those mentors and provides them to our school based on referral. So they work with our schools. When there's a need for a mentor, the school makes the referral to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and then they supply that mentor for the student. All of the activities happen during the school day.
So, and then are they responsible for background checks, et cetera?
Yes, they are. They do a thorough screening, fingerprinting, and drug testing.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The second part of that was, please explain how we'll move forward regarding pre and after school program priorities, Nations, YMCA, Boys and Girls. How will we allocate and decide who gets what? As it relates to that, I know Lauren, if she comes, was going to respond to that question. If she's not here, what I'll do is just go ahead and take, oh, there she is. I know that she's meeting, we've met with YMCA, they're meeting again this week, I believe, and so.
Yes, no, we're good. We actually sent out a survey that closed last Friday to all of our elementary and middle schools to figure out where we have after school programs and summer school programs. We met with the YMCA once, we're meeting with them again at the end of this week to see if we can expand our partnership with them to run some of our after school programs and summer school programs. And I just texted Terry Kennedy real quick to see if she could get an update for us on the Twenty First Century Learning Grant, but I can include that in the weekly board update for all of you to show where we stand with that and expanding that potentially throughout some more of our schools.
My question about that was that we have, you know, different partners that are out there for after school programs. And just updating us on, you know, there are, there's this entity and that one and that one. How, what is the process for deciding if you're going to ask YMCA, if you're going to ask Nations, or if it's going to be Boys and Girls Club? Do they determine where they want to, facilities they want to be a part of, or do, is there a process?
That's a good question. Typically, it's school-based decisions, there isn't a district process for that, as far as I know. I'm just new to this whole thing, so I'm trying to learn that on my own. But from up until now, after school programs and summer schools have been a school-based decision. So I can try to get a better answer for you on that as to who they partner with and how they come up with that partnership.
I think, I think in terms of how, when we have the survey results, that will give us a good idea in terms of where we are as a district. Yes, that has always been an after, before, after school has always been a school-based decision. However, what we are trying to do at this point with partnering with YMCA, Nations, and others is to expand that footprint because there are, there are some equity issues that we would like to address. For example, we met with Rhonda Maya, who's the principal at TICE. She would love to have the opportunity to do an after school program, so we're working with her to be able to make that a reality. Whereas if I'm at, let's just say, Pick on Golf Elementary School, and I pick on golf because golf has had a long history of highly successful, large after school programs. And it's, quite honestly, the folks out there have the means to do that, based, because they're fee-based, they charge a fee. That may not be something that all of our populations are able to do, so we're trying to, one of the reasons we're getting into the survey is see what is currently out there, so we can start to work with some of the schools that would like to have that opportunity, but maybe do not have the means.
And maybe the schools that don't have it that would like to could kind of have the smorgasbord of, you know, well, there's this opportunity with this group and this opportunity with this, and be able to fit it to their needs, as opposed to just having to have them do it.
Yeah. Yeah, tailor it more for personalized, rather than just being a cookie cutter approach.
And to give them, you know, make the connections for them to say, if you want this type of program, this is probably best.
Yes, absolutely.
The other thing that we're, we continue to work on the incubator project. I know that Dr. Savage, when he's negotiating with United Way, I believe, for our warehouse site, is to try to make that a part of the agreement, to be able to maybe partner us, partner with us as it relates to a community incubator project in terms of community-based programs that meet the needs of our students. And so that's something that we're exploring with United Way as we work toward an agreement with our warehouse.
Great, and Mrs. Jordan?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, just from being familiar with some of this, because of my grandchildren over the years, the schools offer a lot of these programs to YMCA, and they put different venues out there for parents to have a choice of where to put their kids, whether it be the summer school for YMCA, which might have gone there for many, many years, and the different churches as well offer.
Yes.
But it is there, and it is based on the parents where they want their kids to go.
Correct, yeah, and when the YMCA approached us, they mentioned all the churches, they don't have a lot of schools, and so they were in Lee County, and so they were asking how we could partner and potentially use school sites as other opportunities for parents where they could drop their kids off for summer school programs that they would run.
Because they utilize churches right now.
Yes, yeah.
That's a good thing.
For sure.
And Ms. Kennedy is here, if you want to get an update on the Twenty First Century Grant.
Twenty First Century Grant and just where we stand with that.
Okay. We are submitting to have Twenty First Century again for next year. Kathleen was just at a conference, though, the last few days, and it, the Twenty First Century Grant was pulled, but she anticipates it'll be back, so that's not an absolute yet. But we are looking to add more schools as long as they have it.
Any other questions?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, next item is approval to agreement with Lee Health with Kids Minds Matter, Lee County School District Collaboration Project. I'll ask Ms. Brooks to respond to that. Question is where, in terms of schools, when, who's the child advocacy supervisor? And protocol sharing, for sharing information and getting family permission and involvement.
Good afternoon. Our two schools for this pilot program are Colonial Elementary and Ray V. Podorf Elementary. The Galisano Children's Hospital and Kids Minds Matter philanthropic organization are working with us to leverage this model program and expand it to other schools through a SAMPA grant application. It's a multimillion dollar grant. So we decided to start with these two schools based on our data and the critical nature of early intervention for elementary school students, especially in regards to mental health. And also, Lee Health is now advertising and interviewing now for the two navigators. And that will have a tentative start date of late January. As soon as they can hire staff and onboard those individuals, they will be embedded into our schools at that point. So their target is late January. And Richard Kealan, who already works for Kids Minds Matter, he will be moving into the position of supervisor of this program. As we were collaborating to build this program between our two organizations, I really saw a trend with Lee Health and Kids Minds Matter, that he would be the perfect transition. So I was happy that they decided on him because he knows our systems, he knows our students, and he helped to really craft this proposal together with our organization.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
So the agreement, Lee Health is paying for the individual?
Yes, so we will have two peer navigators, and they will be hired by Lee Health, and they will be paid by Kids Minds Matter. Their organization will fund it. And the challenge that we have with parents is they tend to trust our schools. And yet, at the same time, with students that present with multiple factors, and these will be our children that present with layers of need, complex cases. The role of the peer navigator is to really come alongside the family if they desire to engage with this peer navigator. It's advantageous that they are an employee of Lee Health because they're representative then of the health system and the systems of community behavioral health, medical care. And they know on a more intimate level those systems from the inside out. And at the same time, they then fall under HIPAA with the family and the trust building, and that the school is a segue over to the navigator. And then the parental release would govern the sharing of information. And if they do decide that they are uncomfortable, or the level of comfort they have with our sharing back and forth, we are, the navigator will also work with the family to help them understand the benefits of a certain amount of sharing so the school can support the child through the intercession provided out in the healthcare community and the behavioral health community.
Great, thank you, so, any other comments?
We'll ask Ms. Brooks to hang there for just a minute, and Ms. Alavado to also come up. Next question was approval to agreement, articulated acceleration plan for college-level instruction for high school students with Kaiser University. Couple of questions about that, is this new? What are the strategies for success? And information on Kaiser's dual enrollment program?
Okay, so in short, yes, this is a new opportunity for our students. We do offer concurrent dual enrollment already. This will be another opportunity for our students and high schools that choose to engage. And, let's see, another question was asked, what exactly is this class? So do you want me to answer that one? Okay, so the course, according to Kaiser's course description, and also in the discussions we've had between our agencies, this course not only helps students to build college success skills, but the nuance to this course is also it's targeted towards success in the business world. So if, it captures a segment of students that may, they may consider going to college, but they not, they may not feel that they have that sense of self-efficacy to start that adventure and through a traditional dual enrollment setting. So that's why this course description provides also the business world skills for students. I think Candace, you mentioned it's like adulting 101 with a focus on career readiness and also college success, dependent on whichever pathway the students choose.
There are several sections of the course that deal primarily with finances, juggling stress, dealing with family, like all those next steps as they branch out in their careers, whether that be career path, college path, but just how to deal with those things, how to take on that ownership role.
Ms. Ball?
Yeah, I, I asked a lot of the questions here, and hearing just a snippet from you, this sounds almost more like an orientation class that a college might offer. So why do we need this as a dual enrollment class? Is this a course that will transfer to a four-year college?
Because the course is listed as part of the Florida College System Course Offerings. Just like any other course, a student takes at FSW or FGCU, it will transfer within Florida. And then, unique to this course, well, unique to all of them, actually, if they're not listed in the Florida College System, we don't have any transferability guarantee. In this case, we do, just as courses in FSW are.
But just in Florida?
Yes, but that's the same for our courses at FSW as well. When they go out of state, they will transfer typically as an elective. And then, private school, it's really a negotiated item. So it's any college course taken through dual enrollment at any institution in Florida falls under those guidelines, as long as it's in the Florida College System listing, which this is.
Okay, and did I understand this correctly? That this will not be online or taken at Kaiser facility, but it'll be taught by district teachers? What qualifications do those district teachers need? What kind of background, a master's in, in what? Could you fill us in, please?
Sure, and because Kaiser is accredited by the same agencies as our other organizations, such as FSW and FGCU, and that would be advanced ed, they have to have a master's degree. The qualifications are the same, a master's degree.
In?
In this case, it's a master's in any field, which at FSW, some of their elective courses are the same. And they have to submit their transcripts to Kaiser and be vetted as a, they don't use the term adjunct when we do concurrent dual enrollment. It's a similar term, but they, all of our teachers, just as in this case, would have to be vetted by Kaiser and then approved to teach this course.
But what, for instance, I know I was vetted to teach the freshman English when I was still teaching, and I needed a master's or a master's in education plus eighteen credit hours in English, which I had. So in other words, they can have a master's degree in whatever?
It would be a master's degree, that is the qualification. So yes, ensure in any subject area, which is not uncommon for some of the other electives at FSW as well.
Okay, so why did we choose Kaiser? How did this come about? Because you just said it is new. Kaiser's a private school, we already have partnerships with FGCU and FSW. Do they not offer similar classes? What, how did this all come about? Who approached whom? And why was the need for this particular course? In other words, we don't have a college success kind of class that we can offer our kids right now?
Well, this course is very unique, as Lori Brooks was saying earlier about the content that's in it. It was approached to us, have we looked into Kaiser and the course offering that they have?
Kaiser?
Nope, as a school, a school had come into information that, hey, Kaiser has this type of course, Strategies for Success course, that really is that bridge that we've been looking for. For the student who may have thought that dual enrollment, college may not have been the path for me, but this provides them that dual enrollment opportunity on our campuses with teachers that they're already familiar and comfortable. And when we met with Kaiser and we reviewed the syllabus, reviewed the content in the book, we really felt like, yes. This is actually something that we hadn't explored before and would provide our students a great opportunity on our high school campuses with teachers that they're familiar with. And because it's our teachers with the master's degree, they'll go through the training with Kaiser, they will be trained by Kaiser. The professor at Kaiser will act as that liaison, but it gives that students that familiarity and that comfortability as they're making that bridge over. A lot of the courses, some of the pieces inside the book, one of the first chapters that they're going to go over, it's called Power. And what it does is it outlines for them really how you take all of your skills, you organize, you plan, you set your long-term goals, why college? So the first chapter's all about why college. You're in this course, you're pursuing this avenue to go forward in college. What are your three-year plans, your five-year plans? And then, how do you manage all of those pieces? So it gives them a lens with having that college student capability.
So what, may I finish? I'm sorry, can I finish asking questions? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just, I'm still not feeling real good about this class as a dual enrollment class because, again, it just sounds like something we could offer otherwise. If you don't mind, what school was it that put forward this recommendation?
So currently, we have four schools that are actually looking for it, moving forward. North Fort Myers, North Fort Myers High School, and the conversation has happened there the longest as we look, in addition to Cypress Lake High School, Dunbar High School, and Astero High School. Those are the four as of today, the present moment in time, that would be looking to engage for semester. We have three others who would like to engage for next year. We're still waiting to hold back. We have not pushed it as asking the high schools to give us a final decision, since we knew it's coming here. So we need to make sure we have the approval of the board first for it. But the conversation with North Fort Myers is where it started, and we've had those conversations, and we've gone back multiple times, and multiple conversations with Kaiser to make sure it actually fits. So their semesters are not our traditional semesters. And we've made it work that, yes, this is what's good for our kids, so that semester fits. So it's been a process that has occurred over the course of, it's really starting in the summer, to make sure this would be a good fit for our students and our schools.
And would students have to, students have to have a certain, I'm rusty on this now, to get into dual enrollment, are the qualifications for a student to get into, the requirements or qualifications for a student to get into this dual enrollment class different from other dual enrollment classes?
So we follow state statute, which sets forth the minimum requirements, and that's what this agreement will follow, so that we're in alignment with statute.
So the same as if they were taking an advanced calculus, college calculus, or something?
Right, yes. Right, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just not real sold on the idea of this, is it doesn't sound like the kind of, because it's my thought that when we offer dual enrollment, we're offering true college classes that will advance, you know, for the advanced learner. It seems to me that we already have classes, success, you know, I know it's not totally geared toward college. Is there a higher cost going through than our typical agreements with our public colleges?
No.
No, under statute, with concurrent dual enrollment, the only cost is the materials, so the course materials, just like at the other colleges.
Okay. Anyone else?
Done, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to human resources.
All right, human resources, I know Dr. Pruitt will come up and address any questions there. We did have a request regarding for administrative positions, please add, if it's an existing position, added, budgeted, dormant, where in the budget plan, if new, the data impact on current positions, demographics, et cetera. I think there are a little bit of need for, a little bit more clarity in terms of the question, and some of this is again, in addition to what's normally provided on a board agenda item.
I think it would warrant a discussion by the board as to what that change or changes would be.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I asked the question, and I have looked at consent items and agenda from other districts, and when they have administrative positions, they show all the information about it in one place. And I know that we can, you know, look up the job description and all of that. So I'm just asking if, when we have an administrative position, that we can show all of the impact, the salary and that type of thing as well in one place on the consent item? I mean, I can, I can give an example of the ones that I saw, if that would help.
Probably, because I'm more of a visual, I don't.
Okay, so am I, so I understand there.
And once I have that, I can.
Okay.
Come back for more conversation.
Anything else? For any other board members? Thank you, Dr. Pruitt.
Okay, next items, operations. The first question related to approval of the expenditure for the ITN for HVAC repair services, and another one with approval of the expenditure for another invitation to negotiate for indoor air quality, environmental consulting, asbestos, lead abatement, microbial remediation, remodeling and painting. So Susan Millay was going to be responding to this question. The question, I understand, is sometimes cheaper to lock in a contract for three years, however, at the end of three years, does it go back out for bids or just renewal? And I think that depends on the nature of the contract, but she can be more specific.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Did the explanation that Dr. Atkins shared answer the question, or would you like me to go through that?
Ms. Gittens?
Well, it was, it was my question, and basically, say, for example, we have a three-year contract, and each year it comes back just for, I guess, renewal within that three-year time period, correct?
Not quite. So the standard practice would be to issue a contract for a base year period of three years. And when we go out to bid, we ask the proposers to provide their rate for the three years, so each year. And then we have optional renewal periods, and each of those are given the opportunity to provide a rate as well. I'd say probably 95% of the time, we get the same rate for the first three years as the three add-on years, which is locking us in for six years at a fixed rate. And so each year as we go forward, we can assess, do we want to go out to bid? Have market conditions changed? Are we satisfied with the vendors who are on contract? And make the decision as to whether or not to proceed. So this particular, where this particular question line, the base period for that contract was three years. So that is a single contract for a three-year period. The legislature requires us to appropriate funding annually. So even though we have a contract for three years, when it says approval of expenditure is the first words, that's what means, the contract's in place, we're not approving the contract, we're just funding it incrementally. And then when the renewals hit, the vast majority of the time, the rates haven't been negotiated when bids were submitted, to retain the same rate for each of the renewal periods.
I think the question that I had is, if you renew after the first three years for the second, then that's six years with the one company. And like you say, things may have changed in the market by then or whatever. How do we ensure equity for other businesses and not just locking in one company for what could be a six-year time period? There could be another company that's come along during that six years that would do a better job or give us a better offer, but we don't know because we're locked in for six years.
Right, that's, that's a good point. And one of the ways we address that risk is the vast majority of the time, we award to multiple vendors. So I think the bids that we're talking about have three or more vendors awarded. So, you know, it is in the district's best interest to get the best rates and the most competitive rates, and everyone who's bidding at that time has the opportunity to lock in for those periods. A lot of time when we see new vendors, either locally or maybe on the other coast who are bidding, we absolutely award to multiple vendors. In case it's a vendor we haven't worked with before, we structure the contract awards so that we've got multiple vendors, and we're trying out the new vendor at the lower rate, and if they're doing well, they're going to get the majority of the business. But at the same time, we have that protection of not to have to go through the entire process, which costs not only district time, but our contractors. You know, they don't like to have to bid on something real frequently because it takes a lot of work out of them. So, you know, if, if a new firm starts up, they may or may not be qualified the first year or so if they don't have references and so forth. So we do have, for example, the vendor open house, that's scheduled for December 19th to invite those new firms who haven't worked with us before to come in and learn how to submit, complete all the forms and to do their research on our website, to see the the current rates that we're paying, so that they can submit a competitive bid.
Now, this, and this may be off a little bit. At one point, when I toured transportation, they were talking about how they get parts, and there was something in the agenda and the consent items about parts. And the way it was described is that they do have multiple vendors, so if they need a transmission, that they've got three or four that are there, and then they still, even though they have the bid, they're in the process, but they still bid out again to that group. Is that correct?
They'll, they'll ask for quotes. So for example, if we have two different types of manufacturers for the same transmission, we might go to the firm that has a manufacturer Model A and go to a firm with manufacturer Model B and see if the market has changed in prices. So yes, after we've submitted a bid, if the bid allows for it in its terms, then we can go back and ask for, you know, price for the product from multiple firms who are awarded.
Well, does the firm though? Let's say seven of us are, were awarded to be in that group for that bid, and you need the transmission. Do you put it out to all of us to see which one of us?
Only those who are originally awarded. So with the original bid.
Right.
Comes a price. So on, though in the bid that you're referencing, there are many, many contractors, because there are, I think, you know, at least a dozen different categories. And so in each of the categories, multiple vendors were awarded. So anybody who was awarded, gave us a.
In that group.
In that group, so for that transmission, just, we would just go to those who were awarded and say, you know, the manufacturer sets their price. What's your markup? What's your markup? What's your markup? And we can get the, go with, you know, because if somebody jumps, their price is 10%, that gives us the ability to monitor that and still get the best competitive price.
And then potentially, I guess, as you're going through that throughout the year, if there's one of them that is always the higher, when it comes down to the total renewal, you can keep that in mind.
Right.
Okay.
Dr. Atkins?
Okay, next question relates to the final payment of Eastlake County High School. Where will the return contingency go? And does it go to reduce costs in other projects?
Okay, and I'm going to look to Dr. Desmore for that answer, and see if she's. I'll have her answer that.
It is nice when we do get contingency, that does come back to a project.
Yes. Tiffany, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, yeah, so. It is? It's afternoon, that's right. That's right. I know. I'm used to nine o'clock, but now it's one o'clock. So, okay. So, yes, so when we have contingency that is unused, the question is what happens to return contingency? But really, it's just an amount that was budgeted for the project that was not spent. So if it's an amount that was not spent, it goes back into the budget then to be reallocated, wherever it is going to be reallocated, based on whatever projects are in the budget either for that point or will be in the budget for a future timeframe. So that's what happens to our.
It just goes to a different project?
Mm-hmm, yep, that's right. That's right. And it went, the next question was, does it go to reduce costs in another project? Not reduce costs, but it does go to fund other projects.
Okay. And how often do we see that? Quite a bit?
I mean, yes, I believe, so I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head, and I know we have our operations and constructions, construction people here that will probably give you a lot more detail. But there are many projects in which we have a certain amount budgeted, and the whole entire amount doesn't get spent. And so it becomes the reserve then at the end of the year, that then as we're analyzing what our next year's budget will be, then we consider all of those funding sources and determine, okay, how much can we afford to fund for the next year? What projects are they going to be, and what funding sources will they be in? Because the funding source makes a difference.
Are the projects then prioritized? In other words, like we've got three schools that we've got to build, we just got, you know, 50,000 back from this school over here. Is there a priority as to which one of those schools would get it?
Yes, the projects are prioritized. We have our capital committee that works on that process right now. And then you all have heard from operations, from Mr. Savage and Ms. Eba about the new, the new capital improvement process that we're putting in place for this year, and that really is what the prioritization process is for what projects will be funded, when will they be funded, and how will they be funded, right?
And all that funding is already budgeted?
Right.
For each project.
Right, correct.
So the money just goes back to?
Correct, correct. It ends up being in a reserve to either be immediately reallocated or reallocated in a future budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if we all saw Scott Rickenbacher in the back enthusiastically shaking his head yes on the contingency question?
Yes.
So enthusiastic that it was like an aerobic workout back there?
Did you want to say something?
We get a lot of contingency back on construction projects. You don't have to come far as wanting.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So did I, and that's, one of, one of the things that we're really working on diligently within especially the sales tax funding source, is based on the revenue that we have coming in, because it's brand new, we have projections, but then we have what really is happening, and based on what the amounts of the projects are, what we actually end up expending on those projects, what funding is left, and how can we immediately work to put new projects in based on our priority we have, based on the funding that we have? Because we had our projection, but then the actuals coming in, you know, if there's something different, how can we slide things in? And so as part of that prioritization process, that's what we're working on.
Okay. And where are we in that, that process? Is it, it's in the working stages now?
Mm-hmm, yes.
How close are we to fruition?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's in the working stages now. Right now, we're, we still have some more data to gather because we're only, you know, really six months into the process, and now we're getting to a whole new time of the year that we haven't been in yet. I mean, we know what happened these past six months, but then we're hoping to really hit some strong sales tax numbers over the next couple of months, given the time of season that we're in. So I think once we get through these next few months, then we'll really have a comprehensive data set to understand what our revenue flows will be like in that funding source for, over the next several years, and then work to refine what our, you know, what our projections and our estimates are for our projects now.
Were there projections, it's kind of an out-of-the-box question, but were there projections as to the potential for the sales tax, depending on the month of the year? In other words, like, you know, November and December, the sales are going to be up. So did we project?
We had an annual projection. It wasn't broken out by month. We had, we had an annual projection based on annual revenues.
Previously.
Previously, right.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Rickenbacher?
Yeah, just a quick question. This started back, we've always returned contingency, but on one of our earlier projects, Harms Marsh Middle, we returned about $3.5 million that kept high project renovation. We had some savings in VE we did. That helped with the race to the top money, I think that supported kicking that middle school off. That was all of the front-end money that got part of the funding together to accomplish that. We usually return as much of the contingency as we possibly can. Many times you'll see some of the kitchen projects, for example, where we return quite a bit of the contingency that was unused. Many times there are some more things that they'd like done during the course of the project that wasn't original part of the scope, and we will use that remaining contingency to get some small wares or another refrigerator that, that had failed during the course of the construction. And of course, but we returned quite a bit of the contingency on that, I think it was over several hundred thousand dollars. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next question, and I believe this is a Susan Millay, but approval of the districts after request, Lee County Land Development code changes allowing for digital electronic message centers on district property. Question was, I would like to know what other districts get in the way of residuals from other companies in other districts, if any? And there were other questions as well, which we'll go through.
When we got this question, Dominic Jamali reached out to the I-4 and I-75 Coalition, which is a coalition of other district planners, and nobody has this kind of relationship regarding signage. So there was no response back from any of them in a positive or negative way, they just don't do this.
Ms. Jevanelli, did you hear that?
Yes, but they'd already responded to me, I believe.
Yep. Notes.
Exactly, I thought it, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that?
Yes, Ms. Gittens?
Is that answering the part about the potential for Lamar, that B question?
That was, that was, that was the first one. That was the, what districts?
Okay.
What the other districts do. Right.
So there's like, you know, question maximum earnings for signage on school properties. Second question, do we know what Lamar's earnings potential and what percentage we are receiving from that land is most valuable, and they need that, and we need to make sure we're receiving maximum potential. Questions from constituents asking if there's going to be an RFP, and might there not be other companies that would want to put in a bid? So those are some of the questions that were raised.
So the first question about are we getting maximum earnings? We don't have an agreement with Lamar at this point. This is, all we are doing in this request is asking for permission to work with the county to identify properties that would be acceptable according to the sign ordinance, the county's sign ordinance. So we don't have an agreement yet, so there's no way to really evaluate maximum earnings because that would be in phase two, after we get permission from the state, or from the county, assuming we do, then we would put this out to a bid, which is one of the other questions. There would be an RFP. Okay, so I'll let you.
Thank you, Ms. Millay. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Okay, so the question was how, what would we do with procuring these services? So the answer is we have a lot of options, and so staff is looking at what those options are. Because we are generating revenue, we are not required to solicit this competitively. When we are expending $50,000 or more, we need to submit a solicitation. So this is the flip side of this, this is a revenue generator for us. So we're not required, however, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't consider that. So we're looking at the different options. One of the options is, would this be a public-private partnership? And our preliminary assessment is no, because of the qualifying project descriptions in statute and the requirement that the, the public entity would at the end of the engagement own whatever is being. and the requirement that the, the public entity would at the end of the engagement own whatever is being built. So, it doesn't appear that this would be a P-3 project, a public-private partnership. So, um, we've begun looking into solicitation or not, if it's a P-3, what other school districts are doing. So, all of those pieces need to come together. And once we, um, obtain approval from you to speak with the county, and if we get the county to proceed, at that point, we'd go full force with determining what the best approach would be to, um, enter into a contract, if that's to solicit bids or to do something else.
Ms. Gittens.
So, so this, the consent item on for tomorrow is basically just to find out information and work with the government to see what we can do.
Yeah, this, this consent item has nothing to do with specific agreement with Lamar. This is specifically asking for the county to, uh, evaluate their sign ordinance and land development code to identify properties or areas that we would have permission to do this.
So, basically, it's my understanding that what we're doing tomorrow then is to give that, to approve you guys doing that.
Yes, this is, this is strictly a land development.
Yep.
This is a land development code planning issue. That's all this is at this point. Um, and it's specifically for the county. It is not regarding other municipal governments. This is the county and the county's land development code.
Right.
So, it's, it's just, um.
Right.
To get information.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it, it would also be an amendment to their land development code. So, it's more than, it's more than information. It would be amendment, amending the county's land development code.
It, it would be the board giving them authorization to approach the county.
Exactly.
To see about the possibility. And then, if there is a possibility, then amending the land development code to allow for what, what may or may not be done.
Okay, yeah.
Right, that's, that's exactly what the question is.
Thank you very much.
Mary?
Yes.
So, I kinda figured all that out, reading everything, but the only question I've had now was, um, the, there is a, uh, RFP for the signs, for the, the ADA sign, yes? Is that what you did that, or is that totally something separate going on? That's what I didn't understand.
Okay, Ms. Millay is coming back to.
Hi, Ms. Jevanelli, could you please repeat your question, please?
I'm sorry, there's a, um, let me see which one it is. It's regarding the signage, the ADA signs.
Are you referencing that, um, one of the bids that's currently in place with the district? ADA compliance? And, and we have a, um, bid for school signs that are digital. So, the scope of those two projects is when the district desires to hire someone to bring in signs for our youth of our students and the community and our staff members. Those signs are purchased. And the difference between this, um, potential contract is that we've been approached to ask if we could put digital billboards on our property and share in the revenue generation for those signs. So, the scope of work for that is, um, distinct from the two bids that the district has in place for signs.
Okay, so this really doesn't have anything to do with Lamar. At the, at the, this is just our separate advertising that we could do, um, on, privately on our own or whatever we want. Each school, they have their own, um, digital signage. Is that my understanding? Because it looks like it's.
Mrs. Jevanelli, are you on speaker? Could you, can you speak into the phone? We're having difficulty hearing.
Yes, yes. Is that better?
Yes.
No, doesn't sound any better.
Yes, that sounds better. Could you please repeat your last question?
So, the, the contract with, um, the, it's number one on the operations regarding the signs, the ADA signs, um, that contract, is this a, just a renewal? Because I'm looking, it says January 20th through the, December 22nd, but I can't. It says with renewal options, three years. So, this is year one, I believe, for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
To approve the award.
Yes, so this, this, um, item before the board is an approve, an award for signs, and that is separate and distinct from the opportunity that was brought to us from Lamar.
Gotcha, okay. It was, it was just a coincidence that it's on this.
All right.
Um, me, okay, that's what, that's the one that threw me off a little bit. And, um, so I just wanted to ask that because I was thinking, oh, order, I mean, are we paying for signs? So, okay, thank you, I, I now I understand. So, thanks so much.
Sure.
Those are like school marquees and.
Right.
Yes. Gotcha. All right, that's perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, the, uh, next question, I know on your list, it, it's, uh, a repeat of I-16, but actually I-17 has to do with the sale, ratification agreement with the board with county commissioners to purchase a parcel of vacant land on, um, Palomino Lane. So, that's a, and I think the question relates to, explain how this sale affects the location of the Innovation School project. And just to refresh people's memory, I think at one time, there had been a little bit of discussion about the potential for a technical school on the Palomino property. But, um, I think, you know, our staff is evaluating, uh, an alternative location for that based on the needs of the county, because that's probably not where the area of greatest need would be in terms of getting to student population that doesn't access, have as much access to, uh, our current locations. Um, and then, there had been discussion about, you know, elementary school on the Palomino site. But if you, if you drive down to the Palomino site, uh, which, which I've done recently, I mean, traffic is, is really bad in that area. I just, I just, even with the, there's a back route through there, even there, uh, from a transportation perspective, that is just not an ideal location, um, for an innovation school or, or any other school at this, at this time. I do know, you know, staff continues to work with Florida Gulf Coast University in terms of, uh, finding an alternate location that does have greater access in the east zone. So, I want Kathy, if you want to expand on that, on Ms. Eba.
Um, so, as Dr. Atkins just mentioned, this has no impact on the Innovation School location project. Um, we never looked at this site as a potential site for the Innovation School. By the time the Innovation School was being discussed, we were already working towards the sale of this property. Um, so, we have sold this part, we are looking to sell this property. There's two items on the agenda. One deals with selling a small piece of it to the county for right of way, and the other one is the, the majority property. Um, and it, it is because of traffic issues. We, we just, it's not a very easily accessible site. So, it doesn't impact the Innovation School project. Uh, the site of that, um, is under evaluation and will be brought forward at a future date.
Is that, um, uh, I, I guess I was thinking too that the sale of that property would help us to be able to buy another piece of property that might go for that? I, I'm not sure.
So, um, I don't think that's gonna be necessary.
Okay.
But it will be, you know, funds that come back into the district that will help us be able to, to purchase property or other capital needs that the district might have.
Do we have any other property, uh, on tree line anywhere? Is there any?
I can't recall at the top of my head all, all of them, but, um.
We have, we have other properties that we've been evaluating for the Innovation Schools and in the east zone and in, in locations we think would be very suitable for this prop, for this school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eba.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, last item that I have is approval of the contract for professional services with Capital Strategies Consulting. Uh, it was, uh, really more of a, a request to discuss the total amount of money that's being spent on lobbyists. Um, as mentioned, uh, we have this contract up for approval, but also, I know that you do get legislative information from, uh, Florida School Boards Association and also the consortium. Um, I know the FSBA is twenty-three thousand sixty-three dollars. Consortium, um, membership dues are three thousand, three thousand dollars. And then the Carol Green contract. And I think Lauren provided a little bit more information about that contract to board members as a, how it related to comparable, um, contracts of lobbyists previously.
Right. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, the reason I brought it up, um, just thinking about the lobbyist and the legislative information that we receive, that, um, FSBA, of course, has the legislative piece and a lot of other things as well. Um, Carol Green provides, um, a, a different service. And I, I just would really like us to discuss the consortium piece. It's three thousand dollars for the membership. However, there's additional costs every time there's a, a conference or, you know, something of that nature. So, it is, it, even to send one person or two people to the conferences, that's another amount. And I'm, I'm just not personally convinced that we need that much lobbying. Bottom line, so. I don't know what anyone else.
Patrica.
I don't think you can ever have enough lobbying. Um, but I do find the consortium to be ineffective. I have found the consortium to be ineffective since day one. Um, and I don't know whether, uh, conversation here with providing direction to them from the Lee County School Board might shake things up there a little bit. Um, but, I mean, I've stepped back from that entirely. I don't go to their meetings anymore, I don't go to the dinners anymore. To me, it's, you know, you sit in a large group and you wordsmith, uh, legislative platform that has been in existence since long before I joined the board. And, um, compare and contrast that to Carol Green, whose, um, contract we will be hopefully approving tomorrow night. Um, and she's more than paid for herself with the money that she brought into the district last year. And, um, I'm hopeful, but not very hopeful, that she'll bring, um, bring it home for us again this year because it takes time. You know, we made a big ass this year, and maybe we'll get it next year or the year after. I'm not certain we'll get it this year, but, um, but I think it takes time. And she's opened doors and gotten us to have conversations with people that we've needed to have. So, consortium, I agree, useless. The others, I think, are very important.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Um, I agree that we need to re, we, we need to have a conversation about the lobbying. Um, I did speak to Andrea Messina when we were up at FSBA about the consortium. She has given me some suggestions for, of things to follow up on. I would like to have the opportunity to do that follow-up and report back, uh, to the board at some point in the future on the consortium, and do a, a report to the board on the consortium so we can have a conversation with some facts in place.
Great.
And can I ask, when is, when are we up for, uh, renewal again? Can we do this prior to paying another three thousand dollars?
I don't know when, I don't know when we renew. I would assume in June.
So, we just paid it?
I'm not positive on that.
Because to me, that would be a defining factor as far as time-wise. I, I really don't want to see us pay it again until we have made a decision, is it really necessary?
So, then, um.
Is that time factor for you, I mean, to?
I, I didn't hear what the answer was.
I'm sorry, I'll have to check with Mary on the invoice.
Yeah.
I think it's by school year, but I'm not.
Yeah, that's what I think too, but I don't know that for a fact.
I would propose that Kathleen do work with them and see, bring us back something. Because I know that even just, um, when we were up at FSBA, another, um, district just rejoined. So, they are bringing back more people in. And there is always number and power. I mean, power is in the number of people that you could have up there. And they introduce us to other people when we are up in Tallahassee that the FSBA does not necessarily have, um, hands on. So, the more people that we can get in front of for the entire state, not necessarily local issues, is a good thing. So, I would love to hear what you could bring back.
Yeah, I would agree. I think there's some pros to the consortium. I'm just not certain we're getting the benefit of it the way it's currently structured.
Right.
And that's why I spoke to Andrea about it, and she made some suggestions to me about other consortia that I should be looking at to see how they do their business and, and, um, how they, uh, to the extent that they have a contract with somebody who's a coordinator, you know, what that involves, both in terms of cost and in terms of responsibilities and accountability.
So, then are we in agreement that Mrs. Morgan will, um, prepare and present a report on the consortium?
With the caveat, as far as I'm concerned, with the caveat that we not pay another fee until we do have that answer.
Well, I, I.
Well, the fee's due in, in February. I'm not, well, January, February, maybe I could do. I'm not sure I could do January. So, it's really a function of when the fee is due.
So, then once, uh, Mrs. Johnson lets us know.
Okay.
When exactly the last payment was, we can move forward.
What does Molly say, too?
Mrs. Jevanelli, any opinion?
No, I, I think we can wait and determine. I thought it was the summer so that, that renewal is, so I don't know. So, we'll just see what, um, Kathleen finds out more information, I guess, too. I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm with consensus.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then, it looks like we are, um, finished with, with our agenda review unless there are any other additions, questions? Okay. So, now we will move on to. Oh, Mrs. Vaughn.
I have something that's not, well, I have an opportunity to, um, re-ask a question that was covered in the Friday board update. It's not on that agenda, like, will we have time?
Yes, so.
Okay, whenever we, we have the time. Because I know a few times, we've not had that chance if we've run really long in doing the review.
Right, okay, so, um, we have two presentations following this, and then we have go to the order at the end. So, we'll do it then.
As long as I have time.
Okay.
When we get to go to the order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a ten-minute break now, and then we'll hear from.
Can I ask a question about that? I just want to make sure we have staff.
Well, and it does involve staff.
Well, then, do you want?
It's, you're, you're the chair. It involves a staff answer, um.
So, since staff is here now, and we don't want to hold them up much longer than we need to, are we in agreement that we'll let Mrs. Vaughn ask the question now? And, um, have it answered by staff?
Okay, okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I had, um, asked a question, um, and, and I think this is something that we need to workshop on regarding, um, Benea Springs and the, um, Rosemary Creek, the ditch, and, um, the status, the status on, on that. Because, um, in the Friday email update, um, Dr. Atkins' office reply was, um, email went out to all board members on this, um, et cetera, et cetera. And at that point, and I do remember that letter since my name was omitted from, um, one who is district-wide, but that's all right. Um, originally, we were having, we were interested, is Kathy, she's right there in front of me. Originally, that, we wanted them to take over maintenance of, of the ditch, which I understand from listening to the Benea Springs council meeting, that it, about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And it seemed to me that, well, it was a three-three vote, they don't want to do that. But they came back with, and, and this wasn't approved either, with the idea that, um, that to buy that land. Um, but then, that didn't get approved. And then there was the idea that was brought up, that they felt like we weren't landscaping, adequately landscaping the area around Benea Springs High School. So, there, there are a lot of things swimming around there in, in terms of their November twentieth meeting. And it just seems to me that at maybe, um, another workshop before there's a decision here that we need to look at the different options because they're throwing back some options on, um, you know, ways that this can be dealt with. And the other thing that, that I had asked was, um, and, and this involves Mrs. Patrica, um, it's my understanding that it is staff. it's my understanding that it is staff that negotiates with the city councils. And when I listened to this board meeting, Councilwoman Amy Karamba, Karam, Karamba, maybe I'm not saying it exactly right, said, and this was also said in the email that, that we got from Dr. Atkins' office, Mrs. Patrica reached out to this councilwoman. But the way it was presented at the meeting is when they were done discussing and different things had been rejected, she said, "Well, I will go back to Chris Patrica." And I just want it to be clear on who is doing the negotiation. And the fact that we rely on staff to do negotiations. It's one thing for a board member to talk with people, and, and we want that to happen. We want our board members to talk and have relationships with the various councils. But on the other hand, it's not the role, it's out of our lane to negotiate with those people. And that was quite concerning to me. And I'm not sure that what we received on Friday gels with what I heard at that board meeting. So if you would please update us on that.
So I will start with the staff is taking the lead on negotiations.
The lead with?
No. The lead, the, it is, the staff, Dominic Gemelli is our lead planner, is in constant discussions with the city in cooperation with Scott Rockenparker.
Rockenparker.
Rockenparker. And, and Linda Jo Sanders. So that is the three people who are in conversations with the city. And that is the only three people who are working on this project. Honestly, my role is very limited even to, they inform me and keep me abreast of the discussions. But Dominic, Linda Jo, and Scott are the three that are leading and pursuing those discussions. To the fact that they got an email yesterday and I wasn't even CC'd on it. So they're, they're the ones taking it. In terms of where we are with it, it originally, it actually originated with Scott. Scott recognized that we had a considerable obligation to maintain that ditch. And it's not inexpensive on a, when you can, when you consider we have to do it on an annual basis. So we have been pursuing the idea that the city could do that. In order for the city to do it, they have, they said they would have to take ownership of the land. They gave us an answer back that they were not interested in pursuing it. But via staff contact, staff-to-staff contact, they suggested that there might be a way to make it work if there was landscaping involved. And that's where they're discussing right now, is the landscaping component. I'm not sure that it's ready yet to be brought to a workshop because this may end at this discussion. There may be no further discussion necessary because the landscaping issue may not be able to be worked out. If it is able to be worked out and there are options, then certainly there would be opportunity to have a discussion further at a workshop or as a board item. But at this point, there's, this is staff and staff discussing if we can even find a place that we can have a mutual win-win solution. That's what staff is working for.
Okay, and the reason that I brought it up, and, and again, I'm going via the whole, the section that I listened to from the Benita Springs Council meeting, they, they were extremely divided. At one point, someone brought up, but then it wasn't pursued, that, you know, since they already had the equipment, that we could be using that equipment. And the other thing that was concerning, it seemed to be their, their view that we, as a school district, were not fulfilling our obligation to keep that, that drainage ditch clear. I had one council member call me and, and voice his concern that actually it would be environmental hazard to not keep that, you know, the, the different, that it drains into, somebody from that area helped me, a creek, a different.
Rosemary Creek.
Well, probably Rosemary Creek, and, but some other lake or some, or some other place.
So it's, it's a part of the storm, I mean, I don't, I don't use the word ditch for it. I call it a stormwell, stormwater swell. That's what it, that's.
Storm swel.
Stormwater swell.
All right.
That's, that's its function. It acts as a swell for stormwater in that area.
Okay.
And it is necessary for swells to be maintained and clear of debris so that they can function appropriately. But again, at this point, we are doing our obligation on an annual basis. We, Scott, very astutely identified that it would be a good idea if we could find a way, since we only own one small piece of this, that, that the city take it over. Whether or not that is a viable option at this point is very much.
Take over maintenance and we retain the property rights or?
No, they, if, if, if this ends up happening, they, they have made it very clear that they, they take over property rights. They don't maintain swales that they don't own. So if there were a way to make it work with landscaping as a, as a alternative, we're doing some additional landscaping in the area, they take over, that it would ultimately, if they take it over though, it's ownership. That is, that is what they, they require. Some, some governments will do it through a right-of-way easement. They, that's not what they want. But if we can't find a mutually beneficial agreement for the landscaping question, which is what they've proposed to us at this point, then there's no further discussions about it to be had because we just can't get to an agreement.
Okay. And, and one of my other big concerns again is just the environmental considerations. And as a school district, I do not want to see any, even if it's small groups of public elected officials in Benita Springs or anywhere else portraying us as not completing our obligation, especially when it comes to environmental concerns. Because we absolutely need to be a leader in being green. And so that's, that's huge. I, I don't, after listening to that meeting, it sounded to me, like anybody else listening to it, wouldn't have a real positive view of our school district. It almost came across as we're being lax about this, so, anyway.
I can assure you, we take care of our obligations and that staff is working diligently to find a win-win solution with staff. I just can't tell you today whether that win-win solution is on the horizon.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Any other comments, board members?
I, I have one.
Yes, Ms. Jevonelli?
So I too received a phone call. And I was told that we are not watering, I guess Benita Springs had given us $10,000 worth of landscaping or something in the courtyard and we're not watering and maintaining it. And that the ci, the city itself, Benita, is watering and maintaining that. So I, I was a little alarmed by that. So I was, it was something I was gonna talk to the superintendent about. So if we could find out what the status is on that and if that's a true statement even, so.
I'm, I'm happy to look into that statement.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll report back to all board members?
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
So basically, they're saying that their part, Benita's part is contingent upon us doing something else. Is that correct?
So we made a request of the city to take ownership and responsibility for the stormwater swell in front of our property.
And that was, staff went to them and said that?
Right. Staff went to them and we made this request. There, they brought it to a board meeting in November. Their board declined our request. And then their staff has come back to us and said, "We may reconsider it if we did some landscaping." So that's the win-win we're looking for. Is there a possibility for us to do something with landscaping? And that something isn't yet been defined, but could we do something with landscaping? And then they would agree to take ownership and responsibility for maintenance of the swell.
And, and when that is decided, it will come back before the board as far as, or is that something you guys just do?
When, I would say if it's decided. If we get to a point that there isn't, that there is an agreement, we will certainly inform you whether, if, if things aren't going to work out, we will let you know. But if, if it were to be able to be worked out, then you would have to approve that. Because it's trans, it would transfer property from us to them.
Well, it would be a dollar amount. Anything to do, you know, with a dollar amount should come before us.
We would have to do some sort of official approval of land transfer. So that would certainly come back to you. I'm just saying at this point, we don't know that we're gonna be able to come to an agreement.
Thank you very much. So if any, no one else has any comments in the interest of time? I think we'll stop for our break so that we can accommodate human resources and the capital improvement plan and hopefully get out of here on time. Thank you very much. Back in 10 minutes at 2:27. Thank you. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll welcome Dr. Pruitt and her team. Oh, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, that's okay. So thank you for once again, for allowing us the opportunity to review all. I don't have a mic. Do you need to get a mic?
Yeah.
Sorry. Here you go. There we go. I'll try that again.
And did you name Mrs. Vaughn?
I think they have.
Okay.
Okay. You good? Okay. All right. So thank you for once again allowing us to present the different parts of the strategic plan in this workshop format. It gives us a great opportunity for staff to present all of the plans that are taking, all of the work that's taking place around the plan, and then use the opportunity to ask questions. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pruitt to talk about workforce success.
So, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We are excited to share workforce success with you this afternoon. I have Suzette Rivera here, Assistant Director of Recruitment, who's going to assist with the presentation. Dr. Martin and Ms. Harrell would have loved to have been part of this presentation, but this was scheduled after they had already had arrangements to not be at work today. So Suzette and I think that we can handle it along with. Ms. Vaughn will close it out for us this afternoon relative to workforce success. Just to kind of frame it for you, you'll see if you look out, our HR leadership team, most are there in the audience. So that way if any, wave team, wave everybody. There you go. If any questions come up that Suzette and I can't answer, then they're on hand there to assist with that. And just in reviewing relative to Vision 2030 and workforce success, Human Resources Division has four very specific objectives that align directly with workforce success. And as another of our staff have shared with you previously is that we are really much embedded in the continuous improvement model and utilizing the lean Six Sigma tools and methodology to help us to improve our work over the past several years, along with the addition of really embedding innovation in the work that we're doing, as well as our work with some of the other divisions which have really allowed us to enhance our work performance. This is the sort of a visual of the Human Resources Strategic Plan. And I like to explain it this way. There are some very specific key work processes that Human Resources does, and those are listed directly under that bright pink where it says KPI and HR metrics. Within each of our key work processes, we have developed various action plans. So key work processes is really our day-to-day work, the work that we have to do, you know, each and every day, month, year, et cetera. And then the specific action plans within each of those that we have on hand and can be reviewed and are reviewed on a regular basis. Then we have projects and initiatives which are above and beyond key work processes, but that will allow us to enhance our work overall. And those would have more comprehensive project charters that we would have that also could be reviewed at any specific time. These are the traditional targets that you are familiar with because they were part of Vision 2020 and now in Vision 2030. And so this goes specifically to really the focus of our conversation about the strategic plan. We have also added some additional targets. One of particular interest was the looking at the turnover of our non-instructional personnel, of which we are now actively tracking. We also look to make sure that when we're looking at our key work processes, that we have specific measures so that we can know along the way if we need to make adjustments or enhancements to anything that we're doing within our specific action plan. So we really like to make sure, we don't want to find out at the end of the year that, you know, we're having a particular problem in a certain area. So we call those in-process measures to help us keep aligned with the work that we're doing. And then we also like to make sure that the key projects and initiatives that we do focus on are going to help us directly with those objectives that we had shared at the beginning of that. So one of the things that we wanted to do as part of this presentation is kind of talk to you about the state of teacher retention. Remember how we've talked a lot, we don't really know because we compare October to October, so it takes us a little while to get to those numbers into those metrics. And when we're looking at overall instructional turnover, we're looking at really two things. We're looking at people who terminate from the district, and then we're also looking at people that transfer from one work location to another. And the other thing that we look at is the actual retention of the instructional staff. And really, it remains kind of flat. We didn't see the tremendous success like we did from the year before. And we can certainly go into some discussion or thoughts around why that might be, but really just nothing alarming either way. It's really kind of status quo. And as you may recall, we've talked several times about continuing to analyze why teachers leave the district. And these are some of the primary reasons that we've identified that teachers leave, and really no surprises there. But what we have done is make sure we've had very specific countermeasures to address these areas of teacher turnover and try to get at those things. And what we have found is where we have put our effort, we've seen improvement. There's just so much that we'd have to kind of have some sort of what we call, I forget the term Shelley uses, explosive change or something to that. What is it?
Breakthrough.
Breakthrough, breakthrough, which in order to really get at some of that percentage. But these are the statements that are most related to teacher dissatisfaction. Again, we've not going to spend a lot of time on this because you've seen this before. And again, just to highlight and make sure you understand that we are definitely monitoring, and we do look at that and come up with the countermeasures. So when we look at why teachers terminate from the district, there's two different ways that we capture that information. One is in the PeopleSoft system. In other words, the reported when a personnel action form is completed, what is put on that personnel action form? Then there is the reasons given. Remember how we've continued to do exit surveys, and we've continued to refine those exit surveys? And so there is alignment in those factors, but the wording is not exactly the same. So it's just kind of important to note that. In PeopleSoft, we don't put a reason for a transfer. So the only way we capture information on transferring is through the exit surveys. Remember, we added that two years ago where we're looking at the reason teachers give for transferring from one location to the other. We know that one of the key things relative to teacher retention has to do with the leadership in the building. And so putting some focus and resources and training, et cetera, for leaders has been one of the primary things that we have addressed. The school climate reports, which have provided school leadership with specific actionable data. We just completed the climate survey and are in the process. We're very excited. We received almost a 60% return rate, which is unheard of. So we're in the middle of desegregating that data and really looking at that. The Summer Leadership Conference Summit that we have done the last several years, the addition of the Vital Smarts Training, which crucial conversations, accountability, getting things done. The NISL process that is used for our principal certification, having a standardized onboarding protocols at the district level as well as at the school sites, standardizing through hiring the Lee County Way. So these are all some examples of leadership. And then for teachers, we have implemented so many new things over the last several years to get at, again, the reasons that those folks leave. And these are just a snapshot of some of those things that we're really proud of. We have, you might recall, we've shared with you, we have our first group of alternative certifications so that teachers aren't having to pay to go to a university to get their certification. So we have a cohort of that group. The individualized plans for each teacher and what they need to do to get their certification has really helped us to reduce the number of teachers who've been non-renewed due to certification issues. We've really seen some improvement there. So again, some very specific things that we have done to address those reasons. Some of the next actions for reducing that turnover is, again, really focusing in on the climate and culture and providing that information to school leaders so that they know what to do. Because at the district level, there's only so much that we can do and supports and so forth. And so you really have to make sure that at the school sites, that they're addressing it as well and they have the information to do that.
Just one thing, one thing that in terms of supporting our school leaders that we have done this year, we've retooled the Principal Leader Program to put more of an emphasis on that program in terms of really providing some real leadership to our school principals. You know, one of the things that I really stressed in our last couple principals meetings is the importance of really relying on those principal leaders in terms of getting some really good, solid advice on how to, I mean, these are the people that have really demonstrated a great deal of success in buildings. And I really believe that our school leaders can learn a lot from these individuals. One of the things that I really pushed and wanted, I asked specifically for the help of our school leaders or principal leaders to help us with, anytime you're implementing a major change in a building, and the example I gave had to do with student discipline, the importance of getting the support of your teachers. You know, I always talk about, you know, when I was, you know, back in the day, we used site-based decision-making. There are various models. It can be collaborative leadership, it can be distributed leadership, site-based decision-making. But the importance is that our really high-quality principals tend to work very carefully on building those relationships with staff members and getting input into major decisions. So one of the focuses of our principal leaders is to work with our principals when it comes to how to implement a proper change process in a building, sharing best practices among that small group. Because Human Resources is one relatively small division when you look at other divisions. So you're, in terms of its reach is limited by its human capital, whereas we're able to deploy these principal leaders that have a smaller group of principals that they're responsible for, and I think can really help them in a lot of the areas that Dr. Pruitt is mentioning in her PowerPoint presentation. So lastly, I know that as they're doing this, you know, Dr. Pruitt and her team also work with principal leaders when they're working specifically with their principals, as are academic services with Dr. Spiro.
Yep. So again, Dr. Martin was already scheduled to be at a conference, so I'll kind of share with you the information that she wanted to share relative to professional development. Some of the strong components of that that have really helped with the retention aspect are the teacher leader roles that have evolved and really shown to have improvement, providing the certification assistance where we're automatically enrolling folks in courses that would support them, to help them to be successful in the tests and so forth that they need to take. Again, the alternatively certified. And remember also, you know, this board's focus on requesting in your legislative platform for some changes and assistance relative to certification. The Level Two Principal Certification Program, the sort of real-time professional development assistance that can be given to schools when needed, very, very real-time, if you will, and the Title II funds that are available to support professional development initiatives. So just, again, some of the highlights and things that you've heard before. Now I'm going to turn it over to Suzette, and she's going to kind of talk recruitment and really its tie specifically to the workforce success.
All right. Good afternoon. So our recruitment team really collaborates with other departments and organizations to ensure that we are hiring a workforce who are outside-the-box thinkers and enhance the experience that students receive in the classroom. And several initiatives actually drive this work. So looking at our college and university outreach, our district has opportunities to attend career fairs. However, we do select which ones to have a presence on by a few factors. We look at our historical data to attend career fairs, and making sure that we look at the performance that we've done in the past really drives whether or not we're going to attend the events again. We also visit campuses where students are graduating with degrees in education and the job market in their state is low. We also attend non-traditional events where we strive to change the narrative in education. For example, just a few weeks ago, we attended the Veteran Networking Event hosted by FGCU. Students invited to this event had served in the military and were now enrolled at FGCU. Melissa Johnson, our coordinator, and I invited two teachers from Calusa Middle, Mr. Daniel DeShazo and Mr. Armand Kalugden, who are also veterans themselves. They engaged in conversation with students and shared their excitement about their transition to teaching. We've also hosted student engagement sessions at the University of Florida where we invited students who are not College of Education majors to learn about different strategies to keep students engaged. We do this to hope that they would light the fire in them to become educators. Another initiative that drives our work is our continued work with our Minority Teacher Recruitment and Retention Committee. The focus of our committee this year is the recruitment and retention of teachers from diverse backgrounds. On the left-hand side, you'll see on the recruitment side, the strategic event is about having a presence on campuses where the student population is diverse. We've also continued to strengthen our relationship with community organizations such as the Southwest Florida Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. On the retention side, we continue our partnership with the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools as they host our annual New Teacher Social. At the end of the last school year, our committee actually conducted a focus group of teachers who were recruited from either historically black colleges and universities or HBCUs and Puerto Rico. We discovered that our teachers wanted opportunities to network with other teachers throughout the year. And this past October, in partnership with community leaders from Primary Residential Mortgage and Hispanic Vote, the first event celebrating teacher appreciation during Hispanic Heritage Month was hosted. Teachers invited to this event were previous recruits from the HBCUs and from Puerto Rico. So along with the networking opportunity we provided that night, there was great dinner and some dancing, but it was a great opportunity, and we're looking to do the same in February. The next initiative for recruitment is our guest teacher recruitment. So the need for guest teachers in our district is critical. Our team is currently collaborating with various country clubs and gated communities to advertise- to advertise the need for guest teachers. This idea was actually brought to us by Ms. Vaughn. Our first event we attended was held at Heritage Palms where we engaged with community members that were interested in becoming guest teachers and we're actually helping them start the process. Also, School Messenger has been a great outlet to get the information out to our stakeholders. In November, a message went out to inform stakeholders about our need for guest teachers. We streamlined the process by hosting guest teacher interviews here at the district office and our team interviewed about 70 potential candidates in three days that are now going through the process to become guest teachers. An exciting opportunity for us is our scholarship opportunities, which are additional. So stemming from our original scholarships by Suncoast and the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, our legislator awarded the district funds toward a Grow Your Own Scholarship Program. And this program is actually divided into two tiers. So Tier One are scholarships that are awarded to high school teaching academy students. And these scholarships will be four-year scholarships. We currently have, I believe, eight scholarships in this tier. Tier Two is going to be awarded to current FGCU and FSW students who commit to change their major to the College of Education. And these are actually two-year scholarships. We have 12 scholarships budgeted for this tier. Both scholarships require students to sign a commitment to teach in the district for a minimum of three years after graduation. So the next slide shows your breakdown of the dollars per each tier. And then our final initiative that we're working on is our paraprofessional to teachers. So our division has partnered with Wiley Education to provide resources to paraprofessionals who are interested in continuing their education. So what we found was a pilot group for this program and they were paraprofessionals who already have an associate's degree and are currently employed in ESE classrooms. We sent them a survey, asked them if they were interested in continuing their education. So out of the 300, we had a couple that actually came to the different sessions. So as of December 2nd, we've hosted about six sessions and a total of 70 paraprofessionals have attended. So now we're about to graduate our first cohort in the spring where we're going to start working with them on certifications so that they can be teachers in the classroom.
And now we'll turn it over to Ms. Vaughn for her closing comments.
Do you want to ask any questions of the ladies there before I give my thoughts? And you know I'll have a bunch of.
I have a, I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ginn.
Okay, I have a couple. One, you showed the percent of zero to two-year teachers leaving. I mean, what, is there a percentage of them? Is it a large percentage or how does that work?
Well, historically, teach, 50% of teachers leave in the first five years. So that's why we're tracking what, what those numbers are. So, and then that's one of the things that we literally look at on a month-by-month basis. And again, it's kind of stagnant. There's no, you know, we're not making a huge dent. The good news is it's not getting worse, but it's, you know, we're, we're a little bit below what the, what the national average is, so that's a good thing. But in terms of making a breakthrough on it, we just haven't done that yet.
On Slide 13, I don't know if you can go back, it's the average instructional retention rate. Can you explain that, the, the green line, the median filtered? So is that our district and all of them and we're in between? I'm not sure what that is. It has teacher retention average one to five years, but then it has that, the green line median filtered.
So, let me back it up. This one here, is this the one that you're talking about?
Yes.
So one of the ways that we benchmark ourselves is against AcPoint KPI. That's a consortium from, that we use to benchmark. The problem is, is they're always like a year behind us. So really, if you think about it, it's almost two years now when you look at where we're sitting here today. And so I'm trying to see on the colors there. Our district is in the light blue. And then the median of all the districts is that, I don't know if that's a black or a dark blue.
It's black.
Yeah. Is that?
Green was the one I was wondering about.
Let's see.
It says median filtered.
Median filtered.
What is that?
Districts of a similar size.
Similar-sized districts.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Is that just Florida or is that nationwide?
Nationwide.
The, okay, next question over here is on NISSL. Am I correct in stating that you are, an individual is invited to join NISSL?
NISSL is part of our state-approved principal certification program.
Right, but you have to be invited to do it? Or if an AP decides that, that they want to go that next step, how do they go about doing it?
They have to, they, first of all, they have to be at that point in their career. In other words, there are some things you have to do first and courses you have to do first before you can do NISSL. And then everyone in that cohort, when they're ready, is invited, but you have, they have to have their principal's approval because of the amount of time that they're out of the building.
Okay. And the last one is on Slide 18. And it has to do with reasons teachers leave.
Based on the, which, the exit survey?
For transfers.
Okay, hold on. There you go.
And the, the top one, the 16% is commute, time and distance. And I am definitely assuming that that's east, a lot is east zone for that, or is it across the board?
I'd have to dig into it, but I'm, I'm guessing that you're probably right, that it's primarily the east zone.
So what are we doing to look at, you know, fixing that or helping that? What, what steps are we taking? Are we doing anything at this point to look at?
Well, you know, one of the things is the, we bargain, I got to be careful how I say this, but we bargain each year based on criteria of schools that are in need, which primarily east zone schools. And that additional, this year we have seven schools at $4,000 and that's one way to kind of entice, to drive. I would say the other, I mean, we're, as you know, continually having conversations about attainable housing and trying to see. But those are the, the primary ways that, that we're doing it. Unfortunately, when you take, when you plot where all of our employees live, it, it doesn't match up necessarily with, with where the schools are. Right.
Certainly doesn't. And I mean, we're just, I won't say we, we collectively as a whole are, when I look at the, the data of the critical needs and east zone, I think in the last one you sent out was 17 and the others were at 11. To me, it's critical because 17 critical teachers and multiply that by just 25 in a classroom, you're talking 300 students.
Yeah, I mean, and we give it full priority. The good news is, if you want to say it's good news, our vacancy rates based on our size are actually better than most districts. So we are doing a good job. It's just that unfortunately, when you have a nationwide teacher shortage.
And what, what do we do then to help those 300 students? I know there are teachers out of, what's the word for it?
Out of field that sign, out of field.
The thing.
Yep.
Is that helping that situation?
Oh, absolutely. And I think our alternatively certified program, we just got word we're placing, how many star teachers? Four-star teachers, which is our program with FGCU and FSW where we take stellar interns and kind of allow them to be in the classroom ahead of schedule. So that's one way that we're helping to address that. I mean, we literally, I mean, they are on the phone, you know, working. If you even go on and put one thing in a job application, we, we track you down. We do everything but come to your house and try to fill it out for you. I mean, we're, you know what I mean? It's.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all of mine.
So looking at a couple of these slides, like school instructional staff, turnover, overall turnover and the average instructional retention rate, I, I understand that that's national. Do we have a way to compare this state and national? We're at 26.2% for overall turnover. How does that compare to the state of Florida and the nation?
I mean, yes, we can get that. I, I don't have it at my, yeah.
And then my other question was, why are we comparing connects to offers instead of connects to hires?
Because of tracking purposes and trying to find a way that is not man-hours to track it. We're trying to get at that, but it's not as easy as it seems for us to be able to track it. Part of that is because sometimes we don't know who, if, if when we hired you, how you, were you a connect or were you, did you just decide maybe you think this teaching might be a good thing and you start to fill out an application? So we're continually trying to work on that very issue so that we can track that better. It's the same thing like, a huge HR metric is time to fill, but we don't have a realistic way to track that either. So it's something we continue to try to figure out.
And then the, the last thing is, we have a huge mobility rate issue with our students, right? And it seems that we have a lot of teachers moving out of the area as well. Relocation is a huge reason for turnover. So I would be curious to see if that's something unique to the state of Florida, unique to Lee, or if that's something, it just struck me as being coincidental that our students move a lot and our teachers do as well.
Yeah, and we, we struggle sometimes to get specific benchmarking with our, like, districts. We find that we're a little bit ahead of the curve in what we track and how we track it and the questions that we ask. So sometimes we struggle and that's where the AcPoint KPI helps because it really at least gives us something to benchmark it against.
I think one of the things that you, that we, you're all aware of this, but you know, Florida and some of these high-growth areas in the United States are a little bit different than, than other areas where you have less growth. You know, I, where I, where I'm originally from, you know, you have just almost zero turnover. I mean, people stay in their jobs for 30-plus years. And a new graduate, you really don't even have an opportunity to break into a system because there are no openings. And you, you're going through a declining enrollment situation, so people stay put. In the state of Florida, you know, you're with a low unemployment rate, you've got pretty massive student growth, particularly in our area. You know, there's a lot of, lot more opportunity available to, to teachers. And so you have a higher mobility rate. And I think you, you also will find the, this, this in other parts of the country too, where you see a lot of growth, they're struggling with the same type of thing, you're trying to find, you know, teachers to fill the, fill the gap. Like I was, I was reading an article recently where, I think it was in Arizona, they're literally recruiting out of the Philippines like we do in Puerto Rico because they can't, they can't fill the positions there due to the rapid growth that they're experiencing.
Ms. Morton?
Following up on Ms. Patrica, I'm, I'm curious about the state of Florida and how we compare because essentially you're looking at the same problem, low starting salaries and you're looking at the same restrictions with respect to state requirements for what happens in the classroom and evaluation, et cetera. So are there districts doing better than we are and what do we learn from those districts? So, I mean, I'm really, like, what are comparable districts in terms of demographics? Because that's, to me, the, a, a big problem for us. And are there districts who are doing better? Another question I have is timing of some of these questions and the relationship to the programs and processes in place that you talk about in terms of, of support. Like, when are you asking beginning teachers late hires, temporary certification, Title I teachers? When are you asking them how it's going? And how are you, how are these various supports related to the outcome of those?
It's, it's on a regular basis. So for example, when we went to the, the all-electronic onboarding where you can do all that at home, but we, we require you to come back within, we like to do it within 30 days and we come in and have those sessions, we identify and check in with folks there. The onboarding protocols that each school is required, part of that involves checking in to see how that's going. The Apples mentors, each school has an assistant principal that's an Apples mentor and they meet with their folks on a regular basis. And, and so that, it's checked in with as well as surveys that go out like at 30, 60, 90 days. And so there's a lot of feedback opportunity and connecting with those folks to help us with that.
So when you say you revised Apples, is that, what have you done and what is that in response to?
So, yeah, that's in response to honestly, survey feedback where teachers were saying that either they didn't see their mentor enough, they didn't feel like anyone was really caring about how they were doing. So it all comes directly from customer feedback is what we call it and checking in with the customer to see and have made those revisions based on the feedback. Because then at the end of the year too, we do that follow-up. How did it go? How did you, you know, did you feel fully supported? The other thing that has really helped is, like I said, that real-time professional development. So a school or a teacher can put in that they need some assistance with X, Y, Z and, and get that real-time professional development or assistance from somebody coming in, whether it's from academic services or from professional development, excuse me, to, to help and support those teachers.
When do you test the school climate? And when do you, when do you do your survey regarding teacher satisfaction?
We just completed this year's.
You say this year's, was it done in June? Was it done in?
We just did it. Like, it just closed. Like, it just closed.
Great.
We were on a, we were doing them in the spring and then there was some concern about the timing of that from the school principals. So that's, we didn't do one last year and we said we're going to re-kickstart it and now get on this cycle where we're doing it once a year and we're going to do it in the fall. And then we've ramped it up this year. We're doing a follow-up. It's an innovation project that we're doing. And we're going actually in and doing actual interviews with teachers at school sites to kind of, and the questions and follow-up are based on what has come out of this year's climate survey.
And then similarly, when you, when, what is the relationship between the climate survey and dissatisfaction and professional development for school leaders? How do you, so let's say you have a climate problem and the problem is the principal or it's the AP or it's something else within the leadership. What's the relationship between the finding and your efforts to remediate?
So in the past, there's been several things. We had, we now have plans, professional performance plans for administrators that are showing some deficiencies in areas relative to culture and climate as well as, also as well as if the academic performance is not where it needs to be. And then there's some, in addition to the performance plans, if it hasn't quite reached that level, it's more of a coaching. And by adding that fourth executive director in academic services, that definitely is allowing, and now we have, you know, Mr. Simmons for high school and Ms. Mayor for middle school and so forth. That structure, along with the structure of the principal leads that Dr. Atkins was talking about, really helps us with that, in that coaching and providing support.
I guess one of the questions I have going through this is, we, we hear a lot about what's being done, but we don't see what worked and what didn't work and what kind of investment was made, what our return on investment is with respect to these programs. I mean, it sounds like you guys are doing good work, but for all intents and purposes, the needle's not moving. So are these projects basically allowing us to maintain?
I, I would say, thank you. So what I could tell you is I could go through where we have given attention, there's improvement. The problem- The problem is, it's, there's, as you saw, several factors and several pieces to the equation that, like, I, I really think it would just take a huge breakthrough of some sort, and I don't know what that is yet, relative to getting at it. And so, one example, the effort that we put into doing individualized plans for teachers and their certification, we can clearly show you that that's resulted in, you know, a seventy-five percent retention rate where we didn't have it before. So, we can do that with each of those projects, pretty much, individually, but not collectively.
Yeah, it's just, you've gotta, to juggle an awful lot and...
And I will say to you too, on the culture and climate, we do, on those specific areas of concern, we coach, put a performance plan in place, then we'll do a very specific follow-up culture and climate survey just for that location. Okay, so, I, I, we do do that to gauge is, if there has been improvement based on the plan that was put in place.
I think going forward, I don't know about the rest of the board, but it would be really helpful if you took, for example, a teacher, a new teacher or a, you know, transitional teacher and, you know, what are the things, what are the pieces that follow that person? If there's a, if there's a principal or a school leader who's found in a climate survey, not, you know, to have an issue, what, how do those things fall into place? I mean, I know we're all about data, but it's hard to, for me, it's just hard to look at the data and relate it to what it is, that's being done. So, that, that's enough for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, so, we're gonna move right on and hear from Mrs. Vaughn.
I just have one, one quick question. Because she, just as...
I'm gonna take my time, so, go ahead.
Well, just, and maybe, I don't even need to know this, but, because everyone else has pretty much asked what I was going to ask. But, why, if you're a late hire, what does that do? Is it because you don't feel?
Because you're not there during preschool, you don't get all that same training that the teachers get. You're just kind of behind, you're, you're just, you're out of sorts, right? I, I don't know what, I don't know what's the other word to use. You're kind of out of sorts.
Well, you're playing catch-up the whole time because you didn't have a chance to, to get on the ground floor as a teacher and kind of get your head wrapped around what you have to teach and what you have to do and the processes. And so, it, yeah, it can...
And so, it's also possible for us to keep some questions here that we can ask later. But, in the interest of time and the fact that we have another presentation, and it's already ten after three, so, we're gonna go ahead and hear from Mrs. Vaughn. And then hopefully, we'll be able to still get out of here a little bit after four. Thank you.
Well, and I do have some comments and some of which go along with, with the questions. And I'm glad that everybody had the opportunity to ask the questions of, of these ladies. First of all, I have met a couple times with the, the team. Most recently, I attended the minority recruitment committee meeting. And I, I have to say, in terms of recruitment and really digging and ferreting out anybody who wrote anything having to do with the word "teacher", I think they're doing a stellar job in reaching out to a lot of different communities and open to ideas and, and, you know, including going out to many of the gated communities. Because I, I know that in my own community, lots and lots of retired teachers, people that might want to go beyond just being a volunteer and actually consider being a guest teacher. I think the biggest challenge that we face here is retention. Obviously, it's hard to find the teachers. But, one of the problems is, if we do not work on satisfying and, and giving the seasoned teachers in our schools the professional respect and courtesy that they deserve, it's going to be counterproductive for recruitment. Because, and I've been asked, and I'm sure all of you who have ever been teachers have been asked, would you recommend this? And I, I can tell you, in all my years, I loved it. And there are many days that I would switch in an instant, this spot for a spot back in, in my classroom. That's how much I loved it. The problem is that teachers are not loving it anymore the way we used to. It's not the same. And, and so, one of the things I wanted to focus on is, and I'm sure you noticed, when you looked at the reasons why these teachers were leaving, lack of voice, lack of input and value on their opinions, they felt lack of support, they felt like concern wasn't demonstrated. And with all due respect, and we had some of the questions, like Ms. Morgan asked about, when is it that you check in with these teachers? I don't think it's as important for somebody here in this building to check in with the teachers regularly. The people that are the movers and shakers, the ones that are gonna keep the newbies and the, and the changers and, and, and help others that are struggling over the line, they're the seasoned teachers. I have clinical, I, I did the clinical educator thing. I've been a cooperating teacher, an Apples teacher and, and all of that. It's a more formal relationship. The people that you want to keep satisfied, and this is me, Betsy Vaughn speaking, not directly from the committee, but as someone who's passionately interested in this, the seasoned teachers. Because when you have a bad day and you're a new person, or not, maybe not even such a new person, and you're crying and upset and, oh my gosh, it's your next-door neighbor teacher that's been there for thirty years and puts her or his arm around you and says, "Look, sweetie, this is what you need to do." You cannot discount that. That's why, and I'm so glad Dr. Atkins brought this up. It's something that I've talked with Dr. Pruitt about and Dr. Atkins about. It is the site-based decision-making collaborative, there are different names for it now. But, I strongly feel, and it sounds like you did that at your school when you were a principal, and we have talked about it. I see that as moving forward as a great savior for some of this. Because again, listen to what I said. Voice, input, concern, support. If teachers don't feel professionally respected, you know, they don't go in, of course, money is the last thing I'm gonna check off here. Money is important, obviously, and our teachers are way underpaid. But, teachers knew going into the business, educators know they're not gonna get rich. They're not on Wall Street. They're in classrooms and, and there's an innate satisfaction with that. And when that satisfaction goes out the window and when they feel not respected, not supported, they're gonna be out of there. Some of them are gonna be so upset to leave, but they're going to be out of there. That's why I'm hoping that we can have a discussion, maybe a workshop or some kind of a discussion, or maybe an overview on the schools that are using site-based collaborative, that sort of thing, and how the climate differs in those schools. And maybe even look at, so, that's one of my huge suggestions. The second thing is, and, and this goes to just our getting out there. There are people, and, and several of us were, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Morgan and I were at League of Women Voter. There was a meet and greet and we each had a chance with other elected officials to, to make comments. And that group at League of Women Voters, they're very well-informed. And when I brought up, you know, I said, "Well, I'm sure most of you have read Governor DeSantis' proposal about teacher salaries and he's saying, and of course, it's the legislature that decides, forty-seven, five." And I said, "But wait, did you look at the fine print?" He's proposing that for first-year teachers. And I remember, and, and I couldn't remember the figure, maybe you have it, Dr. Pruitt, on hand. But, I said, "Can you imagine if you've been a teacher for," and I don't know, does it take at least five years to get up to the forty-seven, five from the forty-one?
More than that, it's almost ten.
At lea...
About eight, about eight, I think.
Eight, alright. Can you imagine teaching for eight years and somebody new comes in, new college graduate, twenty-one, twenty-two years old, is making exactly what you've made in eight years or five years or, or whatever? Can we say demoralized? And what was that figure that it would take?
I wanna say, I think it was thirty-one million or something in order to get, for everybody to get the same percentage increase that the forty-seven, five is gonna be for first-year teachers, for us to give that same increase to all teachers at the same percentage.
And I don't know that the legislature's going to do that, but I can tell you right now, it's gonna be a disaster. It's gonna look good and everybody, hey, he's giving, it'll be a disaster, it'll be demoralizing for our teachers. There's no way at this present time that we can equalize the pay for our seasoned teachers, much less the ones that are veteran at thirty years plus. And, and so, that is going to be a huge challenge for us, plus the fact that we also, and we need to be talking about this because there's gonna be a lot of people in the public saying, "Oh, but good teachers are getting bonuses." Well, the bonuses, they're not always fair, are they? Even though it's changed from the old, the old system of best and brightest...
Changes every year.
SAT scores from a million years before, they're still not fair and they're not equitable and they don't count in for pension. And you can't, you can't pin getting a house, qualifying for a mortgage on a bonus because you can say, "Oh, I make fifty thousand dollars, but sometimes I make fifty-five because I got a bonus." But, you know, you can't put that in. So, challenges ahead, paying our teachers more, maybe continuing to talk to our legislators about the disaster it will be to, to give just first-year teachers. And keeping our teachers that are our veterans, that are the core, the heartbeat of this district, giving them the professional courtesy and respect. And that's why I'm recommending that we have serious conversations about our schools becoming collaborative or whatever. And, and you said there are different models. I'm not, I know we had that when I was in Texas many years ago. And I know there are different models that we might, does that sound like something, Madam Chair, that we could put on an agenda for, at some point in the future?
Yes, I already made a note of that.
Okay. And with that, you know, I could go on forever on this, but I've got to get off the soapbox in because of the time factor. But, yeah, you all know, it's, and, and they're doing a great job, but they can't all be looking at principals and when they, when you have a late hire and the principal and his or her staff doesn't get around to going through those steps, HR doesn't have any recourse, right? I mean, it's like, okay, so, let's make sure our, our, our principal leaders are on top of that and aren't afraid to shake the old finger at principals that are, you know, I'm not trying to throw principals under the bus, but you know what? The leadership in the school, that's what drives all of this, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vaughn.
Just one quick thing. Thank you so much for putting pictures on your org chart. Now, if you can put names with those pictures, that would be wonderful.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
While we're transitioning, say something to the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I, I hear your concerns, Ms. Vaughn, about the teacher pay issue. But, I'd like for us to consider a different way of framing the conversation, which is, for years, we have been begging for more money for teacher pay and we finally have a signal that, that the state is willing to put some money into teacher pay. So, as opposed to talking about the disaster that it could be, let us join the conversation by thanking them for their willingness to address this issue and talk about ways that it could have a meaningful impact on all teachers. I just fear, you know, when I'm, when I'm sitting up there at that dais and somebody goes to the, the microphone and tells me what a disaster it is, whatever it is that we've done, I'm human and I get my back up a little bit. And so, just framing the conversation around gratitude and partnership in terms of how this is gonna play out, that's, that is how I intend to approach it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad we have just board members that are like that because that's why I'm not going to Tallahassee because I personally feel a lack of insight. And so, you, you have, you have an excellent point.
Can I, can I just add to that one real quick? I sent out to everybody, I copied everybody on, on the FSBA agreement that came out and you may have received it, but may have overlooked it. And it, it speaks to the point of, when you read it, it starts with a positive. "Thank you for what you're doing and then here's what we need," so.
And, and that's a very good point because they did put out a statement regarding that.
Yeah, we received that.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
We are now ready for our capital improvement plan update of values.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Good afternoon. We are here today as the second of many times that we will be talking about this year's capital improvement plan. As we discussed in October, we briefed you about what the plan is and gave you a schedule of ideas of how we're gonna move forward with this. Ken and Dominic are here today to join me with this discussion, which we will conclude with a, a discussion about values. So, we, we discussed our goals at the first meeting, which Dominic will review with you in a second. And Ken wants to delve a little bit further into that information. So, we know what our goals, overarching goals are and those shouldn't change very often. They should be what they are. But, our values, our priorities may change on an annual basis. Things happen that may, may cause us to reflect on what our priorities and our values are. And so, you know, for an example, a, a good example is Marjorie Stoneman happened two years ago. And, and our priorities and values certainly changed immediately resulting because of that kind of project. That can happen again. So, while our goals will stay static, or at least generally stay static with some tweaking, our values and priorities are something we're gonna evaluate on an annual basis. So, on that, I'm gonna turn it to Dominic and let him go through the, kind of remind you where we are in the process and then walk you through our goals.
So, just a little recap to start us. The capital improvement phases, we talked in October about the five phases, identification, assessment, selection, scheduling and plan adoption. So, we're finalizing the identification phase here before we go on winter break. We come back from winter break, we'll be in the assessment phase and then through the rest of this first quarter and second quarter of next year, finish us out to get to the plan adoption. The board presentation schedule, Kathy kinda hit on that a little bit, I'm not gonna go through it verbatim, but we were here in October, we had the kickoff, we talked about when we'll be back to talk to you guys again throughout this year. Today, December, we're talking about the capital improvement plan process and the annual priorities and values. So, I'm gonna skip through there and go right to our goals. So, we, we have five goals. We did give that to you folks in October, I'm just gonna step through them quickly for you. The first goal, deliver a strategy that provides a well-managed, high-value and fiscally responsible approach to the district's capital improvements. Goal two being maximize the current facilities and address timely the current and future growth needs of the district. Goal three, apply industry-best practices to maintain, repair or replace district capital assets. Goal four, maintain campuses and ensure the safety of our students and our staff. And goal five, ensure... And goal five, ensuring students have access to the most effective educational technology and resources. So the next piece, we are going to kind of ask to, to tie the district strategic plan values and priorities into the capital improvement process. So just going to walk through a couple of pieces here, the district's strategic values of excellence, integrity, high expectations, accountability, beliefs in students, professionalism, the success factors of family and computer engage, community engagement, workforce success, and continuous improvement, as well as strategic objectives of increased academic achievement, kindergarten readiness, college and career readiness, workforce success, and operational efficiency and effectiveness. The big five priorities of extended learning opportunities, expanding and improving pre-K, expanding career and technical opportunities, and increased workforce success, and a proximity-based student assignment process. So, core values. So the next couple of slides are a few examples of other organizations' core values, such as Baldridge, where they talk about visionary leadership, management by fact, social responsibility, the National Park System, talks about integrity, shared stewardship, excellence, respect, and the Boeing Company talks about good corporate citizenship, people working together, and a diverse and involved team. So what we want to talk about-
Before we do that, if you mind, just, I just want to give you a chance, if you have any questions so far we've covered, because we're going to, we're going to dig in a little deeper in this particular section, but just any cover, any questions about what's been presented so far?
You're so fast, I love it.
I just want to say that it was so focused and direct.
I apologize, I do talk fast.
No, that's good.
And just to, just again, why, just to reiterate what Dominic was saying, that these, these core values that you see that have been proposed in front of you, whether it's through the Baldridge, whether it's through the National Park System, or the Boeing Company, they really define their company's way of work, that it should be reflected in whether it's procedures, policies, customer service, all the different elements that you come to see that company through, that those values are really evident. Similar in the way that emission and vision can be used, the core value serves, can serve that purpose for those entities that really do have them imbuing in the way that they, they carry out their work. So with that said, we're going to dig in a little bit deeper. Dominic?
Okay, so what core values will we, as a district, utilize to make the tough decisions about the sequence of projects? How do we prioritize competing core values? What will we balance, or how will we balance a competing request for things that may have to do with security at a school, or something that has to do with an auditorium, or something that has to do with renovation of a science lab or a playground?
And I'll jump right back in again on this. So, so here's really the, a critical objective of what we're going to be covering today. So we've reoriented you to where we are in the structure of the CIP, but this is where the difficulty, and where the significance of a CIP really comes to your table. And that is, we want to do everything, but we simply can't. There are limited resources, there's a limited time, and so sometimes the sequence of what gets carried out, and what, what project never sees the light of day, has a lot to do with our values and the priorities that we have. And so some of them are pretty obvious, such as what Dominic has shared with you already. But now you, as a board, as a governance team, get a chance to look at some of the elements that specifically are balanced as we look at these pieces. And you get a chance through an activity that we have today to weigh in on these pieces. So this is a, this is a rare opportunity, because these are not specific to any specific project, but they are, they are addressing various values that you can react to as a team. So the examples that, that Dominic has stated out here, you know, a security vestibule, an auditorium, a science lab renovation, a playground, all facility improvements, potentially, which one might come first? That is a, that's a tough decision, that we, when we get with staff and have the CIP process and this vetting procedure, we'll have to make some tough decisions. And so a way that you can help us make those decisions is by giving us a clear understanding of what you, as a board, what you truly value. Because we have district values, and if I were to go back to those values in there, the values that we have as a district specifically, excellence, integrity, high expectations, accountability, belief in students, professionalism, those values may not speak to the examples of which you had. A, a, a science lab, a, a security vestibule, and those elements, you might not necessarily see these values playing out, as pertains to like, like an auditorium. You know, that's really valuing the arts. And so the example of what we have now in front of you is slide twenty-five, and this is, these are some potential core values. These are twelve values that are designed to speak to some of the very specific elements that would be embedded within any facility improvement type of request. But what we're looking for, as you react to this, is also what's missing? Is there maybe something under this umbrella term that we've been able to pull that isn't quite there, that you, as a board, really feel important about, that isn't there? And so we're going to go through each of these elements, one by one, just so that we have a chance to ask clarification about them, talk about them, discuss them as you see fit. That's the part, part of the reason choosing a workshop format for this, is to give you that chance.
Well, and, and so the five goals that we talked about earlier, they're all equal in our, in our mind. Technology to growth, to safety and security, to an effective CIP, to asset management. You, we, we put them in an order, but it's not necessarily in order of their priority. So these priorities and values will help us, if we're looking at a project, and one is dealing with a growth-related issue, and another one is dealing with a safety and security issue, we can't do both, which one of these is going to rise to the top that you will eventually see them in a capital improvement schedule, in the five-year schedule? So are there any questions about what it is we're doing and how we're doing it today?
Ms. Gittens?
Yes, for example, looking at slide twenty-three, and it's the Boeing Company, and it's their core values. Is that prioritized, or each time they do a project, will the prioritization change based on that project? Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, so in our example, again, if we look at our five goals, our five goals have no priority. They are all equally important to us as we evaluate the capital projects. But if you were to say that, and I'm looking for one here that deals with CIP, with a, with a capital project, I'm not sure any of them-
Quality?
Quality, okay, qual- that you tell us today that quality is really important to you, that that is, so as we're looking at a project, for, for example, we might look at a school that has asked for a renovation. That would meet your standard, your priority of, that's quality. It meets our goal of asset preservation, and, and, but, so our goal is already established, but quality, it probably establishes that the, the quality of the educational facilities that we provide our students is important, so we would prioritize that project.
Okay, looking at example, our core, the big five, and then looking at our potential core values. Clarify for me how those two enter.
Yeah, I'll be very specific. Let me just, let's just pull up the CIP potential core values. Because this is really what we're asking you to react to, right? So, if you just keep going, so it'll be there as well. But basically, these twelve essentially speak very specifically to facility improvements. That there is a, you'll notice that any request that comes through in the CIP request process, that they're, they're asking for us to approve this. These elements very much speak to those types of requests, specifically. These are values that will be addressed in those requests. Let me give you an example. Something that's aligned with a strategic plan, if, if it's a pre-K expansion facility, or a technical college. Well, those are elements that we really have prioritized, we said it's important, we're willing to put resources and time and energy, there it is. On the other hand, something that didn't necessarily make it in from an arts standpoint, if you look, that's the fifth one down, well, arts is very important. These are all things that are very important. But if we're having to choose between a technical college, a pre-K center, and an arts auditorium, and we, we didn't put arts in that elevated status, then that might be a year-four or five project. Not to say it can't be done, but it will be tabled in lieu of something that is, in the limited resources, moved ahead. And that, that's really the intent here, or-
It may not show up on the five-year plan, it may be something that we evaluate next year, and, and so, so it's helping us understand where does a, where do your priorities, and we're just, we're putting some ideas, these are, these are potential core values, we just wanted to spur your discussion. But what we really want to hear from you today is, what, what are your values? What are your priorities when you think about facilities? And, and that's why, when I was looking at the Boeing one, it was hard to, because a lot of that wasn't facility. You want to think about things that we will need to evaluate when we're looking at a playground improvement versus a classroom improvement versus a parking lot improvement, different types of facility improvements.
So, so for example, to use examples that Kathy just came through, playground. Playground could be under wellness, you know, as one of these values that's being illustrated. You know, when we talk STEM, if we had a science lab remodel, that would be under potentially STEM and so forth. If you were to tell us the most important thing to you is STEM, as it pertains to wellness, then that would, that would give us a clear indication that the science elements represented in that particular value set would potentially move ahead of a wellness requirement. Not that any of them are not important, they're all important, but that from a value standpoint, where do you fall in that piece? And that, that's really what it's designed to do. I hope that that's helping gain clarity about that, yes?
Okay, just a question. So if you have something that falls in equity, quality, safety, growth, need, so all of those, which would be like a cafeteria-
Right.
-for a school-
Yes.
That, where does that fall in?
Yeah, multiple.
That's definitely not a five, and that's a renovation.
Right.
So where would that type of thing fall in?
And I think you're asking for, to get into details that we will present to you when we are evaluating. What we're asking for you tonight is not to really get into the, the details of a, a specific project, but to help us, you know, when, when you're making your own financial decisions at, at home, you, you're going to prioritize something over something else. What we're asking you to do today for us is help you, help us understand what are the values we should be evaluating the proposed projects against? What kind of things matter to you?
Kathy?
Yeah, I think the point being that you don't want to bring something that doesn't match-
Right.
-with our values.
Exactly.
So you need to know the values going in. So when you come back to us, what you're showing us is consistent with the expectation at this table in terms of what's important to us.
Exactly. We want to be able to say, this, this school renovation project was brought forward, it met four or five of your values, and therefore we prioritize it over this other project.
Right, thank you, Ms. Petrika.
So I think safety and security are number one important for me, and I think that safety and security will be taken into consideration in everything that you do. But what's missing, to me, what's missing is precision. I, I'd like to see precision coming out of these project estimates going forward, so that today, we're looking at an elementary school costing thirty-three million, and six months from now, it doesn't jump to fifty million. And then the other thing that's missing is good stewardship of public funds.
Can I make a comment on the precision one? Just because we just had a comment, we just had that discussion at our team meeting today.
So when you see the five-year plan, the, the more closer to year one you get, the more precise you're going to be. There's going to be some ambiguity in the early years, because we haven't had a chance to fully vet that. But that's part of this project, is that the year, by the time it gets to year one, and it's a funded project, that we are precise about it. We do know what it is, we know what the scope is, and we know what the cost is. When you see it in year three, eh.
The, the close stuff, though.
Yes, the close stuff.
I don't, I don't want to be talking to constituents about underestimates, as we've had to do in the past, and, and also, you know, proper projections of sales tax revenue dollars would be helpful too, because that really jumped. We were initially projecting around fifty-nine million, and I think we're looking at eighty-three million, eighty-three million this year. So projections on, and those aren't really values as much as they are, but you get the point.
And I just want to, to, to address that fully, just because I want to also make sure that I'm getting clarity, because you, you, part of the activity is going to rely on that I'm very clear in what you're saying on this too. So, when I'm asking about these values in particular, what I'm thinking is, what we're, what we're asking for essentially is the content within the specific project. So as, as clearly as part of the process, we want to ensure that we are giving you accurate estimates and so forth. What I, what I want you to see is, are these values that you can very clearly tether to the project? So the project itself, so not necessarily is it an accurate projection, because that's not necessarily the merits of the project, that's really a procedural aspect of it that we, that's really on us, quite frankly, as a business unit, we have to do a, a good job in that respect. But in terms of the actual project being evaluated on its face, the values imbued within that project itself. So, so specifically in these elements, you should be able to see the face of the project itself in these values. And, and so any value that's proposed, if you can't see that, if you can't think of an example, of what, an example of what would a, a project that would be elevated and approved in this particular method, if you can't connect it to the value you're suggesting, I would suggest that it's, it's more procedural nature. So I don't know if that's being clear, I just want, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page as we communicate with you on that.
Wouldn't safety and security be part of everything that's up there? So for example, Trey comes to us with one of his tiny little budget requests, and I know that embedded in that is safety and security for our kids, right? And so I don't know how that can be a separate value as much as it has to be.
Well, it's, it's within a hierarchy, that's a very good, a great example. So, so safety, security is a, is a basic need, a nasal pyramid, you know, we know it's a pretty essential aspect. But some of these enhancements, you'll find, they're, that, you know, if I wanted a sentry tower, if I wanted, you know, twenty extra security cameras, that there's going to be competing elements to that that would have to be offset. So part of the idea here is, when you have an enhancement that goes above and beyond. So, so part of, part of our obligation is, we have to make our schools at least safe for all of them. Some of that isn't even embedded in our CIP, that's a part of a refresh process. We have to address SRF violations, those are things that schools don't have to apply for. They simply have to be done, it's a matter of maintaining safety. However, there will come a point where something isn't really a basic expectation, or something that is that level playing field, that is something above and beyond. Maybe it's an innovative idea related to it. So that's really where this process will differ from a basic refresh. We do not expect people to compete for basic safety needs. That's something that we want to make sure is always clear as well, but excellent point. I saw some of the other questions, I mentioned.
Well, so, Ms. Gittens?
Oh, okay. When I look at your core values list, the thing that kind of throws me is alignment with strategic plan. My brain thinks the core of everything we do is strategic plan. And to have it as an item kind of throws me off, because to me, it's like the umbrella that all of this fits under.
Yes.
And, which also brings me to the, and as far as prioritizing or, or adding anything that's missing, I agree, safety and security is always going to be our first, but we're not prioritizing as much as filling in the list, if that's what I hear you saying.
So we'd be doing both.
Right, okay.
Let me address the first one, the strategic plan. So, so the, the challenge of the strategic plan is it's developed, and then it is, it is rolled out, it's executed. So part of the challenge with that is, certainly what I heard you say was, a value is that we should be aligned with a strategic plan. However, this, you know, let's say that we're having this conversation nine months from now, and there's somebody else who has a different opinion, you know, that that isn't really, you know, I don't agree with the strategic plan that was developed before I was here, or something along those lines. So this is something that is a clear mandate to say, what's in the plan is our top priority, or our second priority behind something else, but, but here's, but, but the challenge is, that's, that's a choice that you, as a board, would, we'd want to have that. We'd want to be able to come back and say, it was essential to you that this strategic plan was observed and followed, and this is where you prioritized it, as opposed to, you could see this as an annual basis until a plan, it might be, you know, additional information, that maybe the plan is no longer meeting our needs, or that we need to review the plan. And so those are, that's where that piece is. It's not, there might be elements like, the example that Kathy brought up was Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. At the time that that happened, if you'd asked, you know, Broward, a month before that occurred, you might have had a very different answer to the month after that occurred, in terms of what was in their plan, what was being prioritized. So this is just a chance at that value level to have that reaction.
So you're basically saying too, depending on the projects, it's going to be very fluid depending on the projects, and things will rise and, and, and fall depending on what it is.
The other thing about the strategic plan, if I can, is that some of the, when we looked at the strategic plan, and the reason we want to go to these values or priorities, is because not all of them are easily translated into facilities. So, so we want to hear from you as we are evaluating the facility side of this, how does, where are your priorities, where are your values, and we will be asking you to rank them. So-
Okay.
So, so they're not all equal, so that if we look at a project, we have two projects, and one, they both meet your values, but one has a high, one meets a value at a higher level than the other, that, then therefore would be a higher priority.
And that was one of the other questions I had, when you're working on a project or evaluating a project, how do you measure whether we have fulfilled these priorities? You know, like equity, for example. If you're doing, you know, Franklin Park. Okay, so how does the, the build at Franklin Park compare to a build in, in Estero Benita? You know, so where does, how do you- You know, so where does, how do you decide, is it equitable? Are we being equitable at Franklin Park as we are being over here?
The value won't get into the weeds as much as clarify a piece of conversation that has to occur. So it really allows us to talk about, for us, as we pitch, as we come back to you with a project list, we can articulate, well, part of the reason why Franklin Park was prioritized was from an equity standpoint. It's a facility age, it's access to diverse populations, and so things along those lines. So this gives us that chance to explain to you in terms that you have really helped dictate to us, here's what we heard you say, here's what we've come back to the table with that we think is honoring your vision as a team.
And my final statement for me is that if a strategic plan is first, safety and security and equity.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Vaughn.
Yeah, I'm having some difficulty with this because I think any project that we do, if it's not aligned with the strategic plan and doesn't include safety and security, we shouldn't be doing it. And the other things, they're not really parallel items. And for instance, equity. Equity is not equality. Equity depends specifically on the needs of the community it's serving. There are going to be people that look and go, oh, well, you know, the arts, let's put that at the bottom. But if you're looking at a project for an arts magnet school, it needs to be up there because you cannot, like North Fort Myers, Cypress Lake, they have magnificent programs. If their auditoriums fall down below that of, I don't know, I'm just going to pick Estero. That's not a, I mean, it, it really depends on, I don't know how we can prioritize, and then you have, I'm, I'm going to exaggerate, a bible for what we love as, as a board. Because it's all going to be dependent on exactly what clientele we're addressing. There are places where community partnerships barely exist. And so I, I honestly, I'm, I'm just going to be frank. I, I don't see the purpose of this. I'm happy you're asking, but I don't see the purpose in this context.
So it isn't actually, in your specific example of equity, it, that's the kind of information that we need to understand because, so as of this morning, we have somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty projects, proposals. I don't know exactly the number because we haven't weeded it through, and we know that not everything that ended up in the list really is a capital improvement project. And we still have two weeks left for people to submit proposals. So as we get into, because we're not going to bring all of these to you, we're going to do some of that evaluation. We're asking for information from you to help us understand equity. So equity, as we're having that discussion that Ken discussed, mentioned, that we are having a, a discussion about equity. Equity isn't equal, you're absolutely accurate. And so we have that discussion, what is equity, how does this project work for equity? The board told us equity isn't equal, but it's very important depending on the project. It gives us the talking points we need to have that evaluation so that when we bring back the proposed projects, we can say to you, this is where we, this is where we landed. And we will give you the information about where, which values, which priorities we used. And you can tell us if we hit the mark or not, if there's, so, so it's, it's giving us the information that we can understand where you're coming from as we are doing that assessment.
So let me use the example you gave, right? So let's say an arts magnet. There, there's a, let's say that we're using it from a magnet concept which is designed to be an equity generator. It's to say, we want to attract people to a particular program, we want it to thrive. You could argue that, that if we were to be at a site like North Fort Myers or so forth, you could tag multiple values here, whether it's equity, whether it's arts, whether it's community partnerships because you've got a lot of investment from outside folks, or you've got keeping it the most modern element. We could come back to you and say, yes, maybe arts on its own, a school that was in a affluent area that didn't really have a history of it, wanted a new auditorium, but this instead of one that needed an auditorium upgrade that tackled all these core values, as you mentioned, they, it certainly rises in that level. So it's not, it's not a matter of if you, if you have the highest one, you always go forward. It's to say, wow, in the preponderance of of these twelve, six of these really are identified. So that clarifies for us in our storytelling to you, yes, it's true, on its face, this arts piece would not seem quite as significant as a safety need, but when you look at it in totality, it's addressing equity, it's addressing all those other elements, that helps us tell a better story to you. So that when you have it, you understand the logic of why it was accelerated to a higher timeline. And that it's a better public story as well. So that's, that's really the intent behind it. So it's, I hope that it kind of addresses the scope, what you're saying with the, with the example.
So then what's missing to me would be writing down the arts, especially important for art magnet, STEM, especially important for.
So curricular enhancements? Because that would be considered a curricular enhancement at an arts school, right?
Right, right.
So curricular enhancements might cover that. I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm asking. This is not on a previous slide. And I thought arts at an arts magnet when I saw curricular enhancements.
When it might not be at the top of the list at some other places. It, it just, there, there's so many, we have so many schools with so many different clientele and so many different needs. What's missing to me is just, you know, an understanding of, like a little extra writing next to why we picked something. I know, I'm complicating it, what can I say?
When I looked at this, my, my, I went certainly to a few that are in my repertoire.
Can I guess?
Yeah, go ahead.
Wellness.
Okay, so wellness, but I thought, I'm looking at this list and I'm thinking, well, some of these things beget something else. So if you're physically, mentally, socially, and emotionally well, you know you're safety, you're safe and secure. And I think that would be a basic for all of our facilities, no matter what their focus is. And then I looked at customer experience, because who is our customer? Well, it's our student, it's our staff, and it's our community. So I think that's, some of these are intertwined of all. And, and many of them are going to appear on, on the list for whatever facility you're looking at. And that's so, I mean, I think that what's missing is that they're all important.
I have one that I, oh, I'm sorry, did you call me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I have one that I, maybe missing or maybe it's intertwined somewhere. And that's, I don't know whether to call it longevity or sustainability in that you've got modernized facility, technology enhancements, innovation. Those three things change with the wind. Next year, what we think is modern or innovative or, you know, technologically on top of things is different. So what piece is in there to ensure that we're not spending as much next year to make sure we're modern and efficient and innovative?
This is built within our goals. This, that's, that's where the values versus the goals piece. That's why the values is designed to be more of a flavor type of idea. It's more of, whereas embedded within our goals is actually asset preservation. It's one of the elements that essentially, that is a core concept of any consideration, is that exact piece. These elements provide more of the customization. So it's kind of like you're buying a car, it's going to have four wheels, it's going to have doors to access. You're going to pick different, you know, what's the, the, I mean, there's going to be a lot of other customizable features that matter to you. That would be different by customer, but you're not going to sacrifice the wheels or something like that. So, well, we'll compromise on one wheel because, you know, we want an extra, you know.
Well, for example, if, you know, you're buying a car and it doesn't have availability to add the, the technology that you need. So that is a consideration to buy the car that does have the plugs where you need them or the, you know, the technology piece.
The infrastructure is built into this, as part of the car again.
Because, because now you, it's like, you can go back to the dealer with that same car and ask them to, you know, change the radio. But that's going to cost you a whole lot of money to change the radio as opposed to buying a radio that can be upgraded as you go. That's what I'm talking about.
So the five goals that they kind of went through, all of those, all that's embedded into it. It's the infrastructure of it. I mean, it's, it's, again, those are like the traditional things that they have, they have to have that in order to even come to the table. It can't even be considered unless it's honoring those goals in some way or another. And so that means, because we can't, exactly to your point, we can't buy something that would be incompatible later on. We, we just can't. And so that's a part of that goal process. This is a little different. This is a kind of a layer after that.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I, I like Ms. Gittens' word sustainability. And I think actually that would be one to be on there. I'm going to use Estero High School, since I taught there, as an example. So for instance, I taught in the medical building. And I was told on one of the sweltering days when our air conditioner broke down that the original air conditioner, it was, people, they cheaped out on it. And they bought something crummy that's going to work. And as a board member, I would rather see us spend, and I, I know we're, right now, we're, we're upgrading air conditioning systems and all of that. I would rather see us spend more money on insulation, on air conditioning, not cheap out so that, you know, let's go to wellness so that the teachers and students would have to swelter because the system's not working. The other thing about sustainability and it's schools like Mariner and Estero, and I'm thinking maybe Benita Springs was built this way in terms of the landscaping and in terms of upkeep. So sustainability and upkeep. Are we putting in something that's going to need an extraordinary amount of maintenance because it's in a courtyard? Or, and, and in some cases, even safety and security, the way something is built or renovated. So a word sort of like maintenance sustainability, I think is really important because, I don't know how the others feel, but I feel like I would rather spend more money and get a quality, is it up, that's up there some, yeah.
Quality.
A quality equipment, because I think in the long run, you save money over cheaping out and then having to replace something in a few years.
I put in, after organizational efficiency, I just slid in sustainability into the piece. So efficiency slash sustainability. Try to, because that's, part of the idea of the efficiency was like, you're energy efficient. You're trying, you're trying to make it so that it's sustainable and improving the overall quality of the organization. So I just, I threw that in there just so that it's reflected as well, additional language.
And then you said quality too, right?
Quality.
And part of that, basically the challenge with quality is, that's, and get it's embedded in the five goals and what are we going to produce that isn't going to have, isn't going to be quality? You know what I'm saying? Quality is so subjective. I think that's the idea here is, in the goals, we've actually defined what quality looks like and through a technology lens, a safety lens, those elements, these again are like the finishing piece of it. It has to be, it has to pass those basic foundational standards or it can't even be considered.
There's been a lot of things that have been thrown up that were not suitable quality. And one, just going back a million years ago, is Cypress Lake Middle School. I don't know what they were thinking with that one, but anyway.
That's why you're doing this moving forward, because this gives them.
Just a real quick question. So if something comes to you, you're going to take whatever the, the ask is, look at all these and see which comes to the top as far as maybe ten out of twelve hit that. So of course that's going to go up.
We'll use this as one layer. Let's, let's put it this way. The first thing we're going to be doing is looking at the goals, all the elements that really are, are really pivotal vetting procedures. This again will be that finishing touch. When we get to those tough dilemmas where you've got a whole lot of projects we want to do, they've all passed that initial procedure, we're really looking and trying to sort them out of what comes first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and then, and maybe never. And that's where, that's where this will be one additional level of consideration we can use to really try to help put then back that list of projects, the proposed list, in front of you that's already had another type of vetting so that you aren't having to go through three hundred projects and literally take them item by item and try to compete three hundred to three hundred as individual projects. That's, that's, we're going to take that on, but this is a tool you'll give us to help us with that.
That's good.
And who else is vetting this besides us?
The whole team, actually. You want to talk about the structure of the CIP team?
So, so just so, at, when, as we, when you say this, are you talking about this list or this project?
Deciding on the values.
So the values is coming from you. This is you as, you as our school board helps establish our policies. So this is in the policy procedure. You are giving us this list. The next step for us that we are working on right now is we will have two levels of assessment before it gets to you. The first level of assessment will be a smaller team who will look at the projects and evaluate them against your goals and your values and decide which projects for small funding get funded this year and which projects will end up in the five-year capital plan. Then that will go to the, a, another group, including Dr. Atkins as the superintendent, to say, yes, that is, that we are going to confirm that group or let's relook at a couple of the projects. Once we've done that level of assessment between those two, we will bring it to you and ask you. And at that point, Ms. Vaughn, you will see, so if, if a playground got to put on, we will put on, the playground got approved and that sentence got approved because of, dot, dot, dot. So you will, you will see all of this tied together. I understand that this year is a little bit hard because it's the first time we're doing this project and so it's hard for you to understand how these things are going to tie together. I think next year will be much easier for you because you'll see that more quickly and readily as, having already been through it. But the first time you see the list of projects we're going to bring forward will be in a list form that says, these projects meet, dot, dot, dot. This project is being presented because of, dot, dot, dot. So you will see that sentence. But right now, it's important, so one of the words that I, and I don't, can you may tell me that this is a part of goal, so I'm happy, but I heard Ms. Gittens say adaptability when she was kind of talking about the car, being able to adapt, that a project can adapt. It's going to be a, it's going to be a STEM classroom today, but it's, it's able to become and used in a different way.
Maybe STEAM tomorrow.
We'll put that with modern facilities, modern adaptable facilities.
There you go.
Because that multipurpose, they can serve that multi-dimensional role. I'll add that as well.
Because modern is very subjective.
Sure. Well, I think that's the idea, is we, we actually, you want a certain degree of interpretation simply because you have no idea what kind of projects will come through. So you're really trying to tether, what, people made this request for a reason. There was something in their mind of why they felt this comes to, why should, why they, why the school level really want it. So hopefully we'll be able to see that reflected in those pieces. What you may find as we go through this process is that there are projects that didn't get consideration and you wonder why. Well, it's, what were the values in play within that particular request that simply were not done? Were not recognized, and that's kind of the key.
So when you say want, how does need fit into that? Because there are some, like there are some of our schools that definitely have a need for some facility enhancement or repair or upgrade. So is that a, a big part of how you prioritize the list of projects?
So when I look at need, I think of those five goals. Because the need, those, those five goals establish our need. For example, the growth projections. We need a school in X because the growth projections are showing us that we're going to have growth in this area and we don't have the student capacity to take care of that. We need to upgrade the HVAC purpose, HVAC because we show. So that need is, you know, again, going back to those five goals. Those, those establish what are our needs are. These then fine tune them into our wants.
Thank you.
That makes a whole lot of sense, thank you. Clarifies.
We are at our four or five time. I'd like to ask Ms. Petrika to provide her comments.
Technology enhancements, I, nobody said it, but it's really, really, really important and I think it's embedded in everything we do. Has anyone toured that room that used to be really cold? What's that room called? Do you know what I'm talking about, the printer rooms? And the fact that the amount of equipment in there now is this big compared to that big before. So enhancing technology sometimes isn't very sexy. It's kind of like putting a roof on your house. But it, it improves everything else that we do, so I.
And it's in our big five. It's in our big five. There's exactly, to your point, it's there. It's in the big five of beyond this. This is finishing touches. These are, those are, those automatically get consideration because, to the earlier point about infrastructure, it needs to be done. You can't, you know, it might, it's a cost that, that needs to happen whether in the refresh cycle or whether in just the goals upon, well, those considerations. These again are just more of those separating features as we kind of look at them. How will we discern between these projects when they have a real face? How will we sort them out between two schools that have the same project? These are the elements that allow you to start to make those very tough decisions. And they are difficult decisions. Now that said, we do actually have an activity for you to go through this. And by, now just to, to, full disclosure. By, now, just to, full disclosure, you know, originally, when, when I designed to do this, you know, they, these are called, there's, there's two different activities that are embedded in this. There's nominal voting through, I, these are tools that are used like on a school site to build consensus. So when you have teachers and you want to get a lot of input, but you want to do it in a very organized way that's efficient from a time standpoint, a lot of people will do things of those elements. What this piece is kind of blending two together. It's the nominal voting as well as a prioritization matrix, which allows you head to head to say, these are both so important, modernized facilities align a strategic plan, they're really important, but which one would get the nudge? And so what I've done is facilitated the same paper process, but to try to save trees. And also, it allows us to adapt based on the feedback you gave us, so I could add and change things on the fly. Within your board agenda item, there's a link in the executive area that you just have to click on this link, and it will automatically take you to this form that you'll be able to do this prioritization. Now, before you do it, there's just a couple of things that I want to, because we talked it over with your board attorney representation, and the advisement was that your individual responses do need to be registered to you. Because there's a, the nature of this being a public meeting, that if you were to have filled out this piece of paper, that would be something that would be available. And so we're going to capture this information. It will not be done anonymously. It will capture your email as you fill in your responses. We'll also, as a result of this, we'll, we'll create kind of a public-facing version of this based on this activity that you went through that, at the conclusion, based on your edits that you came up with on the fly. Will also be a part of that piece. I just wanted to disclose that to you in advance.
Can you walk them through?
Yes, let me walk you through exactly where it is. If you go into your board doc, item four, which is where we are in this agenda, the workshop agenda, item four, and you go down to the executive content session, you'll see a link. If you click on that link, and you'll have to be logged in as your Lee County Schools. So if you have your own Gmail, use your Lee County Schools. It's under the executive content, so.
Yeah, I have it. Debbie doesn't have it on hers.
Did you find it?
Go to item, go to, first go to CIP, item four, click on that one.
She doesn't have it. Are you logged in as you?
That may be.
I don't think so.
Check yourself. If you're not logged in.
Check myself.
You have to check yourself. You have to be logged in as you.
Right. Check myself.
If you're logged into the board docs, you should be able to see that level of.
If you're logged in as yourself, that's what it happens.
Go to the workshop agenda. You want to go view agenda? Oh, you scroll down now. And there you go, right there.
You're welcome.
No, you didn't have it.
There she is.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up, as Dr. Savage mentioned, this, this will record, this is not a binding vote. This is just for guidance for, for CIP. It will record the rankings by each individual board member. And it will, that way, it is available to the public. And it's not some, some sort of secret ranking or anything like that.
And are we saying one, eight is the highest and one is the lowest?
That's right. So.
Well, that's no fun.
Well, that's how it's designed, is to get, you have to make some tough decisions.
So we can have all eights?
Is it all eight? Because it goes up to 12.
No, no, no. But you can use the same number.
It goes to 12, right? No, because go down to the bottom.
Number one, that's correct.
Oh, that's what it is.
Number one is your, means it's ranked, number one. This is a ranking activity. This goes to show, I don't know how to explain things. It's just a ranking activity, so it's one through 12. It has been a while.
Okay, so we're just putting it, whatever you want it to be, one or two or three.
You just go down the list, one, two, three, four, just type it in next to the one that you.
Nobody can have all ones.
We're all going to have 12s or ones.
I clicked seven twice, and it won't let me unclick one of them. So you're just going to have to be a little computer.
I'm happy to try to see if I can. Is it Google?
Yeah, that's.
And I don't have access to it, so I would try to help.
See, like, I made a mistake, and I meant to do that as three, but I had already done that as three, so.
You just click, when you find the one that you want it to be, just click on the different one, it'll replace it. So like, if you click over here, it'll take it off. And, yeah, it'll let you pick it, it'll let you sort things out. The tricky part is actually at the bottom. When you get to the bottom of the screen, there's like a slider so you can get to your.
Yeah, we, we got that. That was the easy part for us.
Okay, for you, maybe.
We got that one.
I looked at him first, how am I answer? Oh, yeah.
I didn't realize there was more buttons. Oh, since there's 12, each one gets.
Yes, each one gets one.
Oh, that makes it worse.
When you're done, just submit. We'll have all of your information.
There's no way we can see our final.
You can, actually. There is a way.
Yes, send me my thing.
Well, if I want to amend it before I send it, there's no way to see.
Well, we can, we can change whatever. If you do find that there are issues of it, we just, in order for to capture this point in time. And prior to submitting, you can really click around. So before you hit submit, you can kind of change your mind, and that's nothing wrong with that.
That's it? Just that one thing?
That's it.
That's it?
That was so fun. Thank you for an activity.
I'm glad you think it's fun. These are really hard a lot of times, folks. It makes you take very tough decisions.
They're really hard, but we had a good discussion. And really, what you're asking us to do is provide leadership. That's really what you're asking.
Exactly. We want to understand where you're thinking, so as we're looking at these projects, we can say, you know what? That one didn't meet the goals, the board's priorities.
Understood.
And it's not your last chance to weigh in. It's just to get the ball rolling.
Because this may be how we feel today. Tomorrow's a new day to say.
We might see the results and say, hey, we need to think about this. Yeah, that's right.
Yep. Could be different in an hour.
I was thinking that, but wasn't going to say it on the microphone.
The next time you see us, we'll be bringing you some, a data, so that as we get into this, you can see kind of where we are. Where, so it probably will be February. We're in the process to, this week, GIS?
Interviews.
Yeah, this week, we'll be doing interviews for our new GIS planner, who will be critical in helping us develop that data. So, because we're going to have to give it, give that person a little time to get up to speed, it'll probably be February by the time you see us again.
So, so at the end of all of this, if I'm in a school that has, you know, basketball court with grass growing in it outside, for example, and they say, we've asked and asked and asked, and they haven't replaced it yet, I will be able to provide them with a, an explanation as to how, how and why their project is or is not being addressed, right? Because I feel like I lack that right now.
Am I correct, everyone has that form to fill out? And they have to fill out the form and submit that form to you by a certain date?
By next Friday, the 20th, the 20th.
Everybody, and they're all aware of that. And then we'll base all of this for that.
Yep.
There are 234 submissions as of this morning. Some of them are not going to be, 234, some of them are not going to be in the process because they may be a maintenance request or rotational request. But we have to vet those out to see where the real number of requests that truly are CIP-type requests.
And then they're going to be, remember, we have the small projects that are less than $200,000, and the large projects over $200,000. So, but yes, in the end, there will be a higher level of accountability. So a principal who has asked for that new whatever, they will understand either yes, they did, or no, they didn't. And remember, if it was a small project that doesn't make it this year, they will have to resubmit for next year. And that's because principal might change, or their priorities may change. And if we just keep the same projects on the list, we won't know whether or not it's a current request or not. So they will, if they don't get approved for this year, they'll have to resubmit.
So can you give me an example of a maintenance request? Would that be like a restroom that needs repair or something more imminent?
We had one this morning. We were, we quickly looked through just a few different examples as a team.
Yeah.
And there was, one of the first things that requested, were requested was a carpet replacement. And we said, well, that's a maintenance, that should be maintenance. So we're sending that to maintenance.
Just waiting on one more, and then we're all set?
It's me.
It's okay. I'm not trying.
And I'm not, I don't think I did it right.
Because you lost track of your circles?
Yeah, and I, it's, well, when I realized I can't do more than one, more than one time. I, I may have to do it again. I'll just give you what I got. You're waiting for me. Does it take it?
Yeah, did you put one for everyone? Even that one now? With all the circles?
Yeah, it won't let you do it. It won't let you submit it if it's.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It might be helpful if you put it on a sheet paper. I will give you a cheat sheet.
All right, there we go. I think I got them all.
Okay, I did receive them all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and change.
Thank you very much for all of your.
So has it calculated?
It, it takes them all tallies and then.
Then we have to calculate it.
I have to, I actually have them all right in front of me. So this, the key with this is that this would take much longer. I can probably do this in just less than a couple of minutes. But is that, do you really want to hear all the results here first, or do you want to have it presented next time?
Send it. Can't you just send it to us?
We can even put it in the board member, because it'll be, we can put it in the board member weekly if you'd like, with kind of some key finds. So it's nice and polished. I'd rather just hear it verbally.
Yeah, and then we can change our mind to.
The summary that I give you will be the totality, but your individual.
I thought maybe it, like that.
It, it does. It collects all of it, it just doesn't tabulate it completely automatically. That's pretty easy. I can do it in about a minute, probably, to tabulate. But presenting it back to you, I'd rather just do that in a nice. Something to look forward to for Friday, that's right.
Like instant gratification.
Thank you all very much for having us. Did you have any questions, or are we all set?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we'll move on to good of the order. Anyone have anything for good of the order? Mrs. Johnson? Yes. I, I was just going to wait till the last. Yeah, that's okay. Anybody else? Okay, so for future workshops, we have an option to stay at the dais or to come down here. Setting this up requires work on the part of staff, time used. And I don't know if we feel like there's a real value to being down here as opposed to up there for these kinds of discussions. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I like it when we can see one another. And essentially, this is no different than seeing and sitting at the dais, because I still can't see everybody. I have to watch the video to see who's saying what. So I, from a communication point of view, I don't see any difference in the two.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I have looked at other districts and their workshops and how they configure it. And they configure it differently. I don't know if there's a different way to do it so we can see each other. I don't know. I mean, it's a kind of a conundrum. But being up there, and I know we went through this last year, of, you know, being closer together to see everybody up there, you really can't. But.
Okay. I mean, like, I, until just now, I have not been able to see Mrs. Morgan the whole time. So, yeah, so I think that maybe we can talk to.
Can I?
Mrs. Patrica had her. Yes. Okay. Okay, I was just. Are you going to go down the row?
Well, me personally, it drives me crazy that they have to set these tables up and break them down and set them up, break them down. I, because I do this for a living, move tables. So I feel that we could accomplish the same sitting up there.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica.
I really like A and B, or B and C, or D and E, or F and G, or whatever it is we do over there. And I think it's a lot easier to configure the tables in a way that we can see each other and facilitate a conversation. I think the only downside there is that it's not instant gratification in terms of it being placed on YouTube.
Right.
But I don't think, I don't think that's as important as quality of work and quality of conversation that takes place at the table. So I would recommend the middle-of-the-road position, which is over there instead of in here.
So we can, we can look into that, okay? Mrs. Vaughn?
The only problem with the training rooms is it's very limited for audience. And so for staff coming in and sitting in, and if we happen to have a hot topic and there are members, you know, that, I know they can't speak, but members that want to sit in, that, that is a problem. Personally, if it saves staff time and effort, we do have the Jumbotron here, and we can look at, you know, I, I think, how, how much time does it take? Probably an hour, at least.
Well, it's considerable work setting the tables up and putting.
Yeah, put, taking them up, putting them down, all this. And, yeah, I, I'm for whatever is easier for staff. I don't think it's going to make a huge difference being up there. Thank you.
I think the, one of the main points in doing it in here is that we did vote and come to consensus on having it live. And to go back in there is going against what we've already decided that we would do to, you know, provide that transparency and being able to, there are people that watch it live. And I just think, you know, if we're going to go back on everything we've already discussed and voted on, I don't know.
Okay, so maybe we'll do a little bit of research with staff and find out about recording options.
Well, they've already told us, we can't record live in there.
Can we just get a consensus?
Okay.
Is she sure?
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Yes, okay. So all those in favor of staying in the pit, respond as saying aye.
Or can you say staying in this room, whether it be the pit or up there, as opposed to going to another?
Well, I think the question was, is it going to be up there or is it going to be down here, staying in this room?
It was the third.
Right.
The third option, too. The A, B was the third option.
Right, then there's a third option, but we can't have that live recording there. So if we are committed to the live recording, and we are, because we voted on that, then are we going to at the dais or in the pit? Okay, so.
Doesn't matter to me as long as we stay in here.
Okay, so then if we, if we commit, if you, let's reach consensus about.
And Ms. Giovinelli's on.
Sitting at the dais. And, and hi, Mrs. Giovinelli.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I just want to say in the, the main, you know, the pit or the order on the dais. I'm good with either one as well.
Okay, so. Thumbs up, yes.
But if we, like, for instance, for tomorrow, say tomorrow, if we were to have a group come in, for them to have to break down setup, or for them to even set up, and we're still here, that could be an issue as well, right?
We don't, we don't brief here.
Oh, just workshops. Okay.
Right.
Workshops only, okay.
Okay, so anyone who's willing to go back to the dais so that it will be more efficient and effective for staff?
I'll raise my hand for that.
Thank you.
Your hands up?
Okay, so then we'll go back to the dais, and then. And my other thing is that we are going to sing on Friday, right after the breakfast. And I've provided a few, a few parts of the elf costume that will be worn on Friday. So are there any comments on that? And did everybody get the song, and are we ready? Yes?
I have a personal commitment, and I cannot attend that.
You just don't want to wear the elf costume.
Oh, I have to be in court for my guardian ad litem. So.
That's a valid excuse.
Yeah, that's valid.
And I just found out today that I will be here. I was supposed to be out of town. So I will be here, but I don't know about an elf costume.
Okay, well, you can wear something festive.
Am I supposed to wear an elf costume?
And where do we get the elf costumes?
We're going to make it.
We'll make it in future.
Does Greg have to wear one?
Of course. Look at, he's got his hat already.
Since I won't be here.
Is this the costume, though?
Just that's the headwear.
I don't think, no, they make elf costumes.
Elf costumes for people as big as me.
Oh, yes, they do.
Oh, excuse me.
They have extra-large and extra-tall and everything.